Let's read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First line of our agenda, minutes for previous meeting. Everyone had an opportunity to review, read the minutes. Any additions or corrections?
No, I make a motion to approve this. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Mail?
Um, I do not have any mail.
That's good. That's good. County attorney, A.J.?
Yes. I first had to address, make a statement generally. I don't know if you guys read the News Examiner a few weeks ago, but the executive session we had was mentioned in that, in an editorial by Bob Hanson. I don't actually see Bob here right now. He will be here, I'm sure, but anyway. As any, as many of you know, actually, I think Russ Seidel wasn't at the meeting. I want to put that on the record. He was out of town, so let it be known Russ was not there. As many of you who read the News Examiner know, Mr. Hanson wrote an elegant, if not slightly scathing editorial, commenting on mine and city attorney John Baker's interpretation of the Indiana open law and our interpretation of executive session application in regards to that meeting. He since has filed a formal complaint with the public access counselor requesting the counselor's opinion of that meeting. Naturally, I disagree with this assessment. The meeting, first of all, it wasn't secret, it was, notice was posted. I also disagree that the meeting didn't fit the exception listed. Stating the closed-door meeting with EDG fits into Indiana Code 5-14-1.5-6.1b4. I know it's a very dry sounding paragraph. Well, here's Bob now, actually, so. Was a reasonable interpretation of the statute and my opinion of the statute. Obviously, Mr. Hanson had a different opinion of the statute as may the access counselor. Anyway, I brought this up because it is official county business now. I must reply on behalf of the council, you guys, and the commissioners to Mr. Hanson's claim with the public access council, and I have until May 15th to do so. This is a response which I am in the middle of formulating. It will be submitted by the due date. I also wanted to add, though, that the county council and commissioners heed my interpretation of statutes and codes. When I tell them something is illegal, generally, they take that very seriously. They would not have attended a closed-door meeting or session intentionally with the knowledge that they were in violation or possible violation of Indiana's open-door law. Lastly, I would like to say that while I disagreed with Mr. Hanson's interpretation of our law and of our meeting and perhaps the tone of his editorial, I agree 100% with him that government should be open, accountable, and accessible. Business should be conducted behind closed doors as little as possible and only when necessary. However, sometimes it is necessary. In any event, I'm filing a response by May 15th, so that's all I have to say on that matter. I imagine our responses, John Baker, the city attorney, has to draft one as well. It will be provided to Mr. Hanson either through the open access council or perhaps directly. Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. Questions, anyone?
Yeah. I believe Mr. Hanson observed by some of the commissioners, the county council, the city council, and the the other ones at that meeting, an apology. First thing he's reporting on a meeting he never went to, so how would he know what was said there? In the second place, it's nothing very true. The meeting was there for us to get information for. The only thing that was voted on was whether to adjourn or not. I think he needs to go back to school and study reporting. That's all we got to say.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else? We'd like to take a small detour on the agenda and ask Cindy Hartman to jump down to new business. Cindy has a prior commitment this evening, and yet she has some business to do with the county, so.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. At the end of March, we've got new computer leases and because of less staff and because of computer prices actually coming down, we noticed that there was going to be a savings. And so I am asking for a transfer of funds of $1,531 to be transferred from the computer lease line item to the summer assistant line item with the caveat that that wouldn't pay all of that person's salary. That would work with Earn Indiana, and they would supplement the other half of the salary.
Any questions? Better, a motion?
Motion to accept.
Pardon?
Make a motion to accept.
To accept the transfer? $1,300 and what?
$1,531 would be transferred from the computer lease to the summer assistant line item.
And I think the salary for that, the hourly salary, had been approved in your 144 that was submitted and that you approved with the rest of them at budget time, so we're going to need a 144.
I'll second the motion to approve the transfer request.
Moved and seconded to approve the transfer request, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Cindy, we appreciate your time. Going back to our agenda, number five, our commissioners' representative. Pardon?
Give you a few of the major things that the commissioners have done in their last two meetings. We signed a contract with Corey's Law and Service for the building of the approximately 20 cemeteries that's out along the route. We gave him a three-year contract, the first year, $21,975, and then two years after that, $24,230 a year. And he has also agreed at no cost to help the cemetery commission trim the outlying cemeteries that we do in the spring and fall once. It's now somebody's field and hard to get to. This morning, we approved two grants. One is a community corrections grant, of which it's a two-year grant, but it amounted $854,600. That's a awful bunch of money that helped them out. Merchand management, we got a grant of $17,050. Last, the last meeting we had, the commissioners approved the capital improvement plan. I don't know how to get this under here. Have you? I don't get this under this thing.
It's probably locked back.
Yeah, it is. Can anybody see that? I can't read it.
We can make it.
And Debbie, can you check? Wrong line, mic's wrong.
You know, generally, we approved this capital improvement plan in the first of the year, but as this has always been contentious of where the money goes, or it goes all over the courthouse, or two added funds are what? We've taken a little longer, in fact, we had a special meeting with the county council and the county commissioners for A.J., our attorney, to explain to us just what we can and can't do with the added funds we get. The added funds are for, as added means economic development income tax, they're for economic development plus that was put on when the courthouse addition was made and the provision in there that the money needed to pay the courthouse debt in excess of what the property taxes dues, plus some courthouse expenses were allowed to be taken off the top before the money's divided. Once those are done, what money is left, which 52% to the city and 48% to the county, with a little bit going to Glenwood, and the county has historically paid $1,000 to Glenwood out of their division of the money. We started out with $774,000. We we put $170,000 in there for remaining courthouse payment. We put $110,000 in there for courthouse operating expenses, and what that turns out to be, $110,000 is the excess utility bills for all our county facilities around here since the addition was put on. It's your additional expenses, the courthouse, the jail, and the annex and all of that. We put $30,000 in there for IT security. When the jail was, or when the courthouse was remodeled, there still was not a fund to do everything that was needed. The courthouse security was not done, so we put some $30,000 in there to do that. And then we put another court, $20,000 in there for instead of courthouse maintenance items, such as the steps out here that was put in when the courthouse was made, but they're deteriorating already. We started out with $774,000, and when we take that out, we have spent $330,000. Then these $444,000 left, of which I said 52% goes to the city and 48, 48 to the county. So the county has to come up with a plan, what they do with their 48%. The senior citizens, we have been giving them $5,000 for years. Partial funding of EDG, we put that at $110,000. That is, that is what EDG used to be funded before the council decided that they would reduce that first to $90,000, and then for this year, they have cut their appropriation down to 60. Regional economic development funding, $15,000. We used to belong to a group called EIDD, which was a regional economic group. That, that group disbanded, and they're trying to form a new regional group with us and the surrounding counties. The reason we need the regional economic development group is there's some federal government funds that you could, you can get grants, but it's very difficult to get grants from them if you don't belong to a regional group. They want to, they want to put their funding out on what's going to benefit the region as a whole instead of, instead of an individual. We're in the process of trying to get that regional group put together now. The town of Glenwood, $1,000, that's what they have historically got. Community development contracts, $30,000. Now, that $30,000 is not a new expense. You've been, you've been spending $30,000 for economic, or for community development for years. The difference is it's been coming out of the general fund by moving this over into our share of added funds, which to me, it really is economic development. It frees up $30,000 out of your general fund. And the money, the money that's left up there, the $51,000, or $52,120 is what is left out of our, out of our share of added. So that can go for any kind of projects that we, that we might deem necessary. For instance, last year, the county and the city both gave $450,000 to Stans and another couple entities gave $50,000 apiece to keep them in town. They agreed to keep their world headquarters here for eight years and to maintain a certain number of booths. That money can go towards projects like that. That, that comes at $213,120. That's, that's our share of the division, which leaves $230,880 for the city. Now, it's my understanding when this added funds was put into effect that the city had to agree to go along with putting on an added tax. They had to come up with capital improvement projects themselves. I've asked Julie, the pool up there is their capital improvement project plus what they fund EDG. If they fund EDG for $110,000 and pay their pool payment, that is the $230,000. So a few comments about the, about the EDG board. We've had, we've had comments that we need a reduced board, we need a full-time director. The board has just been reorganized, we're down to 13 members, three of which are brand, are brand-new people. Nine plus, we have four government, government representatives. The full-time director, we've had Pete Bell in the past, and he's president. He serves as, as the director and done a good job. He's no longer with us, Bill Long's the president. Most anybody that has, has any job to do or any business cannot afford to spend full-time as the EDG director. And I'm here to tell you, it is a full-time job, 24-hour day job. Couple of things in the, in the past that the council has asked the EDG for. In the past two or three years, it's been, it's been a requirement that every meeting EDG has with a client or businessman, or any trip that EDG goes to, they was required to take at least one county person and preferably two, which I submit, you know, the person that meets with the people or goes on trips should be the person most qualified to get the job done. And if you require, if you require one or both of us to go on a trip, all that does is, is add to the cost. In the past two years, to get their, to get their funding, ED, EDG had to get the two county representatives, which at that time was me and Jim Moore, to agree that they had been, to sign off, that they had been fully informed and involved in everything EDG done. So EDG has been forthcoming with what they've done, and nothing, nothing has been hidden. I think you agree that the county's economic crisis is basically that we don't have any jobs. When we lost Visteon up there, we lost 18% of our assessed valuation, and that's what makes the county budgets and the city budgets so hard to work with. Now, you're, you're deciding whether to fund EDG or to take, or to want more money to put on the courthouse expenses. If, if you take all the money and put it on the courthouse expenses, once you spend it, it's gone. If you put it with EDG, their job is, is to have their jobs on a daily basis. You know, if, if you didn't have a job, I think what you would do is rather look for a job tomorrow. If you didn't get one, you'd find one the next day, or if you didn't, you'd look the next day. So that's what ED job, job is to do, and they can do it whether an individual can, because you have to have the state involvement, you have to have the federal government involvement, the regions involvement, to get it done. So that's, that's my plea for raising EDG up to $110,000 over the $60,000. I think it's, it's money well spent. Now, if you do agree with that, there's a couple of things we need for you to do. You've, you've budgeted, you reduced the budget for EDG down to $60,000 last year. So we need additional appropriation of $50,000 to bring that up to the $110. The other thing that I think needs done realistically, if we're going to hire a full-time director, you're going to have to assure the man that he's going to, that, not that he's going to have a job, but at least he's going to, that position is going to be funded. So we need to make, make it clear that the council and the commissioners are willing to fund that job for at least four years. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mark. Questions, comments?
I have a question to start with. When we've been with Debbie, a month and a, well, a month and a half ago, there was you, Shirley, Bill Strong, myself, and there was an additional $69,205 that was unused added money from 2011 to 2012. I want to know why that wasn't shown up there in the totals? Because that money has to be either spent this year or it's going to have to go into a fund where it's shared then. So why wasn't that shown? That was directed to you.
Well, they worked off, they, the plan was based on the edit for this year. If you want to know, I mean, I feel that we had made last year's capital plan before that money was received. It was made in March. We got that additional monies about mid-April. I really, I mean, probably the right thing to do with that would be to apply the 48-52 split to the additional monies that we received from the state, because some of it was 2011 monies, and then some of it was catch-up for 2012, and then we received additional money over the $723,000 that the state said we were going to give. That was that found money last year for the state.
Why would it have to be split when we have up to three years to spend?
I just said that I felt that that was a fair thing to do.
Okay, that was yours.
That's only my, my opinion.
Okay, second, the operating expenses you had up there for the courthouse, you said is additional to the, what it was before. Well, when this courthouse was done, there was remodeling done in that old courthouse. So to me, it all goes together in one thing. There's no splitting, in my opinion, period, on that.
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
When, when the courthouse was done, when this was built, there was remodeling that went on in the old courthouse at the same time. So to me, you don't split out what was used prior versus new. It's all up together in one package, in my opinion.
And it is all in one package.
No, you said it was additional.
What I said was, this, the $110,000 is the additional utility costs?
Yes.
Over what it was costing prior to the courthouse addition?
I understand it, but to me, it all is one building.
It is all one building.
Yeah, that's right. And I know what the cost for the electric and phone, all that was in 2012. I know the total.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I mean, these are, these are Debbie's figures that she figured out if they're wrong.
Now, I know, I got a printout statement that she printed out in her office at the engagement. I agree with the joining, the $15,000 to join the Eastern Indiana Development. I agree with that. Before it was what, 10, the old one was around 10, 10?
And we don't, we don't really know what the cost is going to be. I put it up there to cover it. If, if it doesn't cost that money, the money is still in the fund.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. I think we should join, that's a necessity, in my opinion. And that's all I got for right now, so let's hear my last comments.
Thank you. Okay. Having nothing under, nothing shown under Old Business, does anyone here have anything they want to bring up for Old Business? If not, we'll move on to New Business. And Bill Long, Cindy having moved up, that brings Mr. Bill Long, president of the Economic Development Board, the newly formed Economic Development Board.
Madam President, and members of the board, first of all, I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to be here tonight to talk to you about economic development. Before we start, I want to introduce some of our board members that are here present tonight along with the, the elected officials that sit on our board. And of course, Shirley Wise, your president, participates on the Economic Development Board, as well as Mr. Barker Barkin, president of the county commissioners. We also have Debbie Alexander.
Montgomery.
Montgomery, Montgomery. Excuse me, Debbie, I apologize for that, who represents city council on the board of directors. So thank you, Debbie, for coming. We also have a new member to the board, Mr. Keith Barrows. You understand Keith, you let everybody see him. He's with Connors, the Consolidated Grain and Barge Company here in Connersville. Recently moved to this, to this community from, I believe, Cincinnati, and I believe he's an Ohio State grad. We won't hold that against you, Keith. Thank you for coming. Madam President, what we'd like to do, I have some people here from the board that I want to introduce, and if you can indulge us to let us speak on behalf of economic development, what's going on there, give, give their perspective of economic development from, from their different businesses and industry that they're in. If that's okay, I'd like to introduce to you first, Mr. Craig Howell, who's a project manager at General Electric.
Thank you, Bill.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a project manager for General Electric, formerly Dresser Roots. Started with Dresser in 1974, that's my first trip to Connersville. Been with the company ever since till 98, left, worked for another machinery company, and came back. Through those years, I've worked as a application engineer for sales offices. I worked for Siemens a period of time as a regional sales manager, same type of equipment. What our needs are at GE currently, being bought, we have a lot of influx of other facilities that build similar type or slightly different type of compressors. Our current capacity now is we can test compressors up to 5,000 horsepower. That's going to be pushed up to well over 7,000 horsepower. So our first need is we need to get power to our facility for about 7,000 horsepower. The second is, it's no problem bringing a lot of our equipment in. Some of the bigger pieces of equipment we have as a raw casting, for example, might weigh 38, 40,000 pounds. They might be wide loads, et cetera, et cetera. When those skids are finished, some of the heavier loads will go out at between 80,000 and 130,000 pounds. And some of them may exceed 10 feet in height, and they may exceed 10 feet in width. We just had a load this last weekend, it was on a double-drop trailer. So maybe not what that is, but a double-drop trailer rides about six inches above the ground. He was destined, I believe, to go to the East Coast. His tractor was too short, and you will understand that. He got stuck in our gravel drive, or gravel lot, couldn't get across the tracks in front of the stamp repair building. So he had to drive to Chicago, get another tractor with a higher lift, and then he took off on Sunday. So our transportation issues are significant as far as how we go about it. Somebody's probably been stopped in traffic by some of our loads. Go out of our facility, if we get out, we go down, pass Mousie's underneath Abayaduck, go across, curve around in front of St. Gabriel's, and go back north on One. And that's how we get out of Connersville. You can't go south with some of our loads because of the roads, weight limits, and other restrictions. So to go even south or east, we have to go north and then go from there. We may go west on Seventy or East. Those are some of the challenges. Again, it's weight and height, and we don't see that really changing in the future. There can be spurts where we'll have several large loads. I've been a project manager on several projects for the city of New York. We're finishing, we finished 16 of the 18 compressor sets. They range in weight anywhere from probably about 80,000 to 95,000 pounds. They're all overweight, oversized loads. If they can make it across the parking lot, they can usually drive all the way to New York City, not a problem. But it's a challenge to get out of our parking lot or through the streets here in Connersville. Second issue we have again is the power. We don't see our business decreasing. In fact, we see a lot of influx of machines from other GE facilities. We've recently gone to three tests, or three skid, or three shifts on test. Before, we hired technicians, we really didn't have three shifts. Now we are running three shifts on test. Somebody who lives close to the plant can verify that. The third thing is we have sewer issues. We've worked with the city, they've come out many times to take care of the water in the sewer. We believe if, if something is done with the streets, you probably should be doing something with the sewers as well. So we do have backups within the facility. So we do have backups within the facility. Those are the three main things. There's quality of life issue that, that we experience, and that, I, I moved here from a sales office in New Jersey in 81. Glad I did. Kids were raised here, they had a great life, great mentors, terrific. So I'm going to go to one income. There's a lot of young people today, that maybe some of those things, they have other things they want their children involved in, et cetera, et cetera. At this point in our juncture, we all remember what Connersville was in 74, I remember what it was in 81, it's much different today. Kids here today, they're seeing as it is today, they don't really have that past. But to attract the new people, we need certain amenities. The last one's more of a quality of life issue. Nothing big, but when you take clients, or when you have visitors come to the plant or witnesses, your choices, and they may stay for two or three days, they want to review engineering drawings, they want to review the factories, et cetera, et cetera. Then you have two places to take them for lunch, or dinner, and it would be Mousie's or the Mexican restaurant. And in days past, when I was here, there was King's Table, it goes way back, there was a country club. You know, it's, it's, nothing gets all the restaurants down, they're, they're all great. I've gone to them all, still go to them all. But the thing is, it's nice to go to a restaurant where you have tablecloth, you have cloth napkins, these are what some of these things people are used to, as far as their quality of life. And if we want to attract those people, when we have new candidates, taking them to a place like that means a lot. One of my first assignments here, I don't know if any of you know, Stu Robb, he was General Product Manager at Roots, and when I was here in training, he asked me to take a prospective customer out to dinner. He was about my age, and we went to the country club, had a very nice dinner. But it's, it's that kind of appeal that you have in those kind of restaurants, where you have the quietness and, and just the quality of life that's a little bit different. And again, nothing disparaging about the restaurants in town, I love them all, and, and they do a great job, but we just need something a little bit different. And that's, are there any questions or anything?
Since you're the expert on GE, could you, do you have employment figures, Ralph? I mean, I'm not going to hold you to where we are today.
No, I, I don't. I want to say that we're probably pushing 240, don't hold me to that. I believe we're going to be hiring some more in the shop and in the office. Some of them are interns, but again, I'm not certain of the numbers, but we've grown quite a bit. When I, when I came back to GE, or when it was Roots, I believe there was probably about 70 people. And thank you, some good management, some other things, why some people that are still here in town, they did a great job, and we've been able to grow. And with GE, they're putting a lot of money into our facility, we're expanding the test facility, so we can handle more equipment, and again, therefore the need for the higher power motors and things like that.
That's good news, good news. I know I've tried to bone up on some of the, the things that the Economic Development Group have accomplished over the years, and I see the Roots Halliburton back then, the association, and where we were with the jobs, and certainly it's good to be hiring again.
It's pretty much so.
Understood from, from meetings with the school, that there are particular programs available in the training, so that you can have the skills that you're looking for, but maybe not enough, or?
Well, interestingly enough, some of the students from machine trades at the school, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but don't forget, some of those kids already have jobs with offers to pay additional schooling, so sometimes those kids aren't available. They've got great offers from some other authorities outside of that campus. And that's a credit to the school system.
The school system, okay.
Anything else?
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. At this time, I'd like to ask Barbara Stewart, President, in honor of real estate by Conners Foundation. Barbara also serves as our Secretary of the Board.
This is almost taller than me, so where's my stool? As in, working on the EDG has been a privilege for me, because I met a lot of good people, people that worked tirelessly, doing their job, Jimmy Wool, others that aren't on there right now. They worked hard without pay. And I looked at that, and I said, I can help them, because I know our community. I've lived here all my life. It's been a privilege to live in Connersville. I could have moved to Carmel, made lots more money in Root's State. I decided to stay here, because I love this town. It means a lot to me when I have visitors coming into my office, and they say, well, tell us about Connersville. I can tell them about Connersville. And then I get out and I drive them around, and I try to show them the best parts of Connersville. And they'll say, well, what are you doing over here? Or what are you doing over there? And what about this empty plant up here, and this empty building over here? And I have to go ahead and be, present something very positive to them. What are we doing? And I said, as the Economic Development Group, we are working diligently on getting new people in here. And they said, well, how are you doing that? And I said, you know what? We have a group of people that are working together to accomplish this, and it's a hard job, a very hard job. And they said, well, what kind of things? And I said, well, for one thing, we're working with the state to bring people in here. Even though we have a negative with high unemployment, that is a positive, because the state is paying attention, and that's a real good thing for us. And I look at it, and I say, you know, Connersville is a good place to live, because our people are resilient. They will survive the hardest of times, and haven't we had the hardest of times in Connersville? I think everyone of you is, we're not your head, and we must strive to go forward. Whenever people come into Connersville and they ask me, well, Barb, show me what new developments are happening. And I take a deep breath, and I said, well, let me take you a drive out by the high school. And I will drive them out there at the new homes that are being built, maybe one here, one there. Mr. Parrott is building, has built a couple houses out there. And I said, this is the kind of home we can build you, and we will build you. That's economic development post. Whenever you have building going on, then you have jobs. Those people are working on jobs. The question is always, well, what about our children? Where are they going to work? Will they be able to find jobs? And I have to look at them and say, we are doing our level best. And I look at the school system, and I take them by the school system, and I say, right here is our vocational school. They are contributing to the GE right now. They are training these young men for that, these young women. And they want to know about the colleges that are available. I said, did you realize that you can have your college education for at least the first couple of years here in Connersville? We have promoted that over and over and over in the EDG. We work diligently with Dr. Hodges, same, Dr. Hodges, what can we do? When we went over to GE a couple of years ago, and sat down with them, and we asked them, what do you need for us to do to keep the people here in Connersville? And the young man that was in there, he lived near Cincinnati, and he said, Barb, what we need is activities. The cultural part of it, we do not have. And I said, do you realize we're right in the center of Cincinnati, Dayton, Indianapolis, and you can be at any of these places in hours' time? He said, but we want more than that. And he said, your housing, you don't have enough nice housing. And whenever I go out here and I'm trying to find a $200,000 or $300,000 house for some of these executives, it's really hard to find. And even on a $70,000 or $80,000 house right now, it's hard to find, because our people have went through hard times. They aren't moving as much as they did, because they're afraid of what's happening in our community. So I look forward, and I say, you know what? We are on the rise. We are moving forward. Our, and our employment is increasing from where it was before. And they say, well, where are they working? Well, they're working out of town. So then I say, you know, we're trying really hard to get something in that fizzle on planet. And I tell them what happened, and how it shut down over a three-year period of time instead of a one-year period of time. And I tell them about the visitors that's coming in. Oh, we heard about Carman Motors. We were out in California, and we heard about that. That was a really neat thing. I said, yes, but it took too long. It fizzled, because it took too long to get the government to come on. But I said, you know, the state of Indiana is really trying to, to help us in Connersville. Well, I looked at the population of Connersville, and I looked at the statistics. It kind of worried me, because if we do not provide jobs for our families, what is going to happen? Your age group, 65 and over, 13% of our community is 65 years and older. 18% are 50 to 64 years old. You put those two together, I think you have 31%. A third of our 50 is old like me. What's going to happen in a few years when they die off? We must bring in, yeah, you guys will laugh too, because you've got the beard, gray beard, and you've got less hair. Okay, I've got the, I've got brown hair. You wouldn't realize that I can, really don't have brown hair, would you? But anyway, when you look at those statistics, and you say, one-third of our community is old folks, what are we going to do, folks, when that, that age group dies off and we don't have the tax base? We have no choice. We have to make it go. We have to bring jobs into this community. If we don't, we're not going to have a tax base. And when you cry the blues, because you don't have jobs at the courthouse, because we can't pay you, remember this, we are a dying community if we don't get new jobs. Those new jobs will bring in the new people. Tonight, I worked with a young man and woman, he works over here at Moore's Towneblee, and I said, how much does it cost you to drive to work every week? He said, between $60 and $100, depending on which car I drive. Community, our community will thrive on new jobs. Does it take a while? You better believe it. Last week, I am a Pacers fan. I mean, I take a nap early, so I can stay up late, watch the Pacers, I can't help myself. But I looked at that, and I said, the Pacers are going to win. They really worked hard their first two years, uh, two, two games. Did anybody else watch this, or am I just speaking? Most of them did. But I go to bed at nine, so you've got to remember this. Okay. Anyway, the first two games, they were, we just pat them on, and we're throwing them up and hitting every shot. The next two games, they didn't do a lousy job. They lost by a whopping lot. I forget the score, what was it? Anyone, do you remember what the score was? They lost by 20 points or better, I think, the next two games. What they did is what our community has to do. We started out big, we had lots of factories, we had lots of jobs, we fizzled for two years, which ended up being the last five or six years, we have fizzled. The Pacers came back. They beat Atlanta, right now they beat Atlanta. You can do the same thing, and our community can do the same thing. You'll sit up, I go shut up.
Thanks for that. At this time, I want to ask Kathy Winning to come up. Kathy is District Manager of Community Relations with, with Duke Energy.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. It is a true pleasure to be here to share with you some information that I have about what the responsibilities are for a local Economic Development Director. Part of my responsibility is community relations, as Bill said. The other part of my responsibilities is to help with the local Economic Development Boards in the 12 counties in which I have responsibility for at Duke Energy. In those 12 counties, I sit on seven different boards. So does that make me an expert? No, far from it. But I do have some information that I'd like to share with you this evening, in a plea for you to plead, to seriously consider and give thoughtful consideration to funding a position here in Fayette County that's much needed for an Economic Development Director full-time. Over the past 25 years, economic development has become extremely competitive. We have cities competing with cities, counties with counties, states with states, and regions with other regions. We even have the US competing for business with Mexico, China, Japan, and other countries. My point there is that economic development is very competitive, and in Fayette County, my question for you is, who is representing Fayette County in this competition? I'm not here to say that the individuals who have worked in the past very hard to make that happen didn't do a good job, because they did. However, they had full-time responsibilities in other areas, and that's why I'm here to share with you what a full-time Economic Development Director would have the opportunity to do for every citizen in Fayette County. If we don't have an Economic Development Director, then I would ask the question, what other organization in Fayette County is ready to step up and serve as a liaison to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation? Leads that come in from other site consultants or companies looking to expand their business first go to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Who do we have that has a contact there? Does anyone in here know who the President of the IEDC is? Does anyone know who our regional representative is for the Indiana Economic Development Corporation that serves this region that Fayette County is a part of? If we're scratching our heads and saying no, I think that helps to build still a further case for why we need someone full-time, who would be developing those relationships with Victor Smith, who is the President of the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, with Wanda Gibbs, who is our regional representative. Wanda should know every single site and building that we have in this area to help represent it when those companies come to the state of Indiana and want to relocate or to open a new business. Wanda should know what those are. Where would Wanda get that information? By working with our local Economic Development Director. What other organization in the community is equipped to work with our local elected officials? When a company comes to town, it takes a lot of coordination and working with all of our elected officials to be able to put together that incentive package for them to be attracted to come to this community. As I said before, it's very competitive, and with an individual who devotes full-time to that, they can work with the local elected officials. Who else, if we don't have a LIDO, can work with the local and state workforce development boards to be able to put together those training packages that we might need to train new workers in a skill as we bring a new business to town? And at this point, I'm focusing a lot on the new businesses coming to town. However, we also have the opportunity for a local Economic Development Director to work with existing businesses, to be sure that they stay here when they're ready to expand. We help them to find the perfect piece of property to be able to expand their business and stay here in Fayette County. We help individuals like GE to overcome some of the difficulties that they're experiencing, so that when they're ready to do another expansion, we've got the railroads so they can cross it, and we've got the roads so they can get out of town. If we don't have a paid LIDO staff, who else in the community has the comprehensive knowledge of pertinent topics such as real and personal property tax abatement, tax increment financing, EB5s, SBA 504s, all of the different incentive packages that our state offers, as well as those packages offered through the Economic Development Association at the federal level? If we don't have a paid LIDO staff, who else in the community has the knowledge of all the permitting that needs to take place in order to expand a business or bring a new business in? Those permits could be required from the DNA, from the, I mean, the DNR, from the EPA, or from IDAM. There are also permitting requirements at the city and at the county level. But for the LIDO, what other entity in our community has the ability to work from start to finish with a major company and keep that confidential, economic development opportunities that come forth without compromising the confidentiality of the project until such time as that information should be made public? If we don't have a LIDO, what other organization in the community is better equipped to field everyday questions from the general public that in some way pertain to economic development for the entire community? From inquiries about our population statistics, to questions regarding, where do I go to get a local permit? And what kind of business-related information that a local company might need in order to expand? Where would those people go? Once a site and building database is established, and that would be a database at the state level, that would have all the information about the available sites and buildings that we have here in Fayette County, what other organization is then going to keep that? that updated? When a company is looking to relocate, one of the first places they start is at the local website. Who maintains a local website for us if we don't have staff to do that? When a company is looking at relocating, they look at a region. They may look at five states and they continue to narrow it down. They're looking for reasons to throw you out of the mix so that they can further narrow down. Some people call them site consultants. I call them site eliminators because that's what they're there to do. So if we don't have good data in the state's database about all the buildings and sites that we have available, and if we don't have a very well-maintained, dynamic website that those individuals are going to be looking at, we're off the board before we even know that we were being considered. So in summary, I'm here to say that economic development is very, very competitive. What are we doing here in Fayette County to be sure that we are the best competitor out there? Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Last but not least, I'd like to ask Randy Wine, President and CEO of FED Health Systems, to speak to you.
My apologies, I've got a little bit of a cold going on, but, excuse me. I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach with where I think you ought to be looking and considering. And it's about windows of opportunity. It's something we at the hospital have been dealing with for five years. '08 not only hit us hard nationally and statewide, but it was also the final rounding down days of the Visteon plant. Very harsh. I've seen the future of what I pray to God cars will not come from. Being a coal miner's son from West Virginia, I watched my local town die. I watched that infrastructure and those essential services leave. I watched the government come in and build a fifty-million-dollar four-lane road to nowhere. They'll drop you off at Hardee's Dairy Queen, the only supermarket left in town. Here's what I'm asking you to consider and to think about. You still have the infrastructure here to continue on and to grow. You've still got the manufacturing. You've still got the good school system. You've got a quality hospital that stands with only thirty-three percent of the nation of being above the break-even line. I'm here to tell you, you can recruit and you can bring people home. We're doing it. A lot of our managers at the hospital are young people coming home. In July, we will have the first female OBGYN come back in the history of the hospital, born and raised here in town. And we're trying to recruit two of those. What I want to say is if you look at national economic indicators, which I've had to say for five years, I've been glued to that TV watching, you have a window of opportunity now to act. Let's look at the countries, Japan, our own Fed, the European Central Bank are printing money and flooding the markets right now for one reason. They're all trying to export their unemployment. They're all trying to crash the dollar. When you look at what's happening with those injections, when you look at the first quantitative easing that we had as a country, it did a lot of effect. The second one had less. The third, even less than that, which means this can't continue. Now, the Dow today broke fifteen thousand and maintained over fifteen thousand for the first time ever. But when you talk to business people here in this city or other people throughout the state, or even back in my hometown, West Virginia, there's just a feeling of uneasiness about all this. What's causing this? It's not that manufacturing's going through the roof. The nation's taxes are higher, which is one of those bubbles that everybody watches. Personal income's down, which is another issue of a strong economy not doing well. And home prices aren't recovering even though we're almost printing given-away mortgages at this rate. So what's wrong? If I had that answer, I'd be running for president, Fed at least. But I will tell you this: What we recognize as a corporation was we had a small window of opportunity before what I felt and many others felt is going to be a very tough economic time, another readjustment just like '08. We took that opportunity with the help of a lot of people in this room to build a brand-new site center. And we're doing it now because we feel we can renew our bonds and we can get those jobs in here. That at least will be another fifteen to eighteen jobs that we're bringing for stuff that we're already sending out of town. What I'm asking you to realize is that I feel you have a window of opportunity to go for because it's going to be too late when things slow down, things tighten. When that happens, what's going to happen to the businesses is they're going to draw back on their money, they're going to draw back on their dividends, they're going to draw back on their growth. Right now, I will tell you, there are companies looking to move, there are companies looking to do things. Now is the time to capitalize on that. Because I can tell you, I just did three to four years, I don't see it. Don't listen to what I say, go look at what's on the Fed's net, but listen to the arguments that they're having with each other. And as I said, that money's not going to get any cheaper down the road. So you still have the infrastructure, the essential services, but right now, you have a major, major asset to this community setting, and it's deteriorating. Something has to be done in that building. And I hope that the right decisions are made, and see, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close our remarks by myself. Tonight, you must decide the economic future of this community. This is not just about our city or our county, it's about our community, which is made up of both city and county residents. They are all stakeholders in economic development as the livelihoods depend on it. Prior to being elected chairman, I had served on the board for five years. However, I've learned more in the last month since I've been chairman than I learned the first five years of my board participation. I want to use this time to share my observations with you, not only during the time as a board member, but also as my perspective, from my perspective as a businessman. I've lived in Fayette County for twenty years. During that time, I've raised a family and built a successful trucking company. My first experience with economic development was more than ten years ago. I was interested in building a trucking terminal in the industrial park, so I contacted the EDG for assistance. I needed land to build a terminal, so I asked to address the Board of Directors to explain my intentions. This would have brought jobs to the community. I was quite surprised at the makeup of the board. It consisted of mostly retired people who either slept or talked through my presentation to them. I mention this with no disrespect to retirees because I'm striving to be one myself. I expected to be asked the most important question of all: How many jobs would be created by providing the land? But much to my surprise, the only question they asked me was, "Are you going to pave the parking lot?" And I said, "My intentions weren't to pave the parking lot, but we would do so once we, we started making some money." I was turned down, and today, our facility is located in Spartanburg, South Carolina. Although we maintain our corporate office here, South Carolina has benefited from most of the jobs we've created over the years. Today, the EDG board is made up of community leaders, successful business professionals, educators, and elected officials that all share the same vision: To make our community a better place to live and to do business. We cannot let the failures of the past shape our future. Each of us has a fiduciary, each of you has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure any money is spent wisely. I understand that. However, you were not, you were also elected to be visionaries, one who can see beyond the present to help chart a course for growth and prosperity for our community. EDG must have a qualified executive director. To attract a qualified candidate, we must provide them with a competitive pay package with the assurance funding is in place for three to five years for the position. It will be impossible to find a suitable candidate without these things. Since assuming the chairman's position, I have spent countless hours of my time trying to fill the void that exists. To date, I have made three trips to attend meetings in Indianapolis, participated in two site visits held at the old Visteon complex, participated in numerous meetings with the IEDC officials at City Hall as well as at courthouse. I've had over two, I have over two hundred active email streams pertaining to various EDG projects. This does not include all the phone calls and other correspondence that I've been involved with, this all in my spare time. Economic development is the live blood of every community. Without it, we will dry up and blow away. No company is going to just stumble into town and say, "Oh, this looks like a nice place to, to move my company." We must be willing to compete for every job available. We cannot unless you provide the funding necessary to do so. There are some old business axioms that I've always subscribed to. It takes money to make money, and you can't save your way into profitability. It is my hope that tonight, you will be the visionaries I spoke about and appropriate funds for EDG as outlined in the capital plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'll answer any questions anyone has, Madam President. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, yes. How much money does EDG have now, surplus of CDs, cash on hand, et cetera?
I think, looking at the balance sheet this afternoon, there was in somewhere in the neighborhood of, somewhere around eight, nine hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
That's money that you can use?
Yes.
That you can use for a director?
Yeah, I would use it for whatever we need.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, I got several questions. One, you passed out this expense report in that meeting?
Yes.
Over the last three years, I'm curious why you didn't pass out a income statement at the same time?
We have that, your president has that available to her at every meeting. She's your representative on our board.
I'm just asking, you passed this out, why didn't you pass that?
This didn't feel it was necessary.
Well, to me, I think it's very important, like Jim said. I think you've got enough money on hand right now to fund your own director for three to five years without any additional balance.
That is, if we don't spend any money for anything else, that's not what economic development's about. It's about having monies to, to do the projects that are, that come our way. If we, if we're using every penny that we have on hand to fund employees, then there's no money for, for project development. And there, there are plenty of opportunities for that.
Well, and you've got, if you've got eight hundred thousand, and right now, you get a hundred and fifty thousand, you're extra, I mean, with the county and the city combined. So...
We don't, we don't perceive that as extra. I apologize for disagreeing with you, but that's not extra.
It goes into the pot.
That, that's money that we use to fund economic development in this community.
Now, you have loans that are extending. I don't care who the loans are out to.
Sure, you can see our balance sheet, your president has it.
Now, those payments will come in over time, so, I mean, I'd rather know how much is coming in over the next few years, you know, how those come back. So that's money back into your pot. So I'd like to see that. If our president has that, and she hasn't shared that with us.
Those are, yeah, what you're talking about are restricted funds. That's money that is, is given to us through the government, and it's not money that we can use to fund EDG projects.
I understand there's grants that are...
That money goes back into that fund, though. That's that revolving loan account that I'm referring to. That's not money that we can use.
Well, I'd like to know that. I mean, I'd like to see that information right.
Mr. Flunder, you have access to that information. Your president serves on our board. She has that information. She serves on the board for one purpose, and that is to keep your council apprised of what's going on in economic development. If you choose not to ask for that information, I can't help you, but you have that information. It's there every month for you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else?
Thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda...
Before we go any further, Madam President, we've heard the positive EDG. I'd like to know, we've got a lot of people, is there any people, I'd like to see what some other people may think about EDG positives or negatives, if anybody would like to speak.
Well, I think we have item number nine for patron concerns.
Okay, all right.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to follow the agenda.
That's fine, okay.
And I appreciate your patience and all of their patience, but...
Okay, that's fine.
Next on the agenda is Corinne Westerfield?
Corinne.
Corinne, the Cemetery Commission equipment purchase?
I think we would have been tabled from last meeting, so we would have been old business. But, Corinne, take one each in that round, please. Was everybody able to get a copy of each, one of each? You should have two, which should be a estimate, and then one should be the bylaws.
A short couple of the bylaws.
Who was short?
When I came to the last meeting, we were discussing moving funds for the Fayette County Cemetery Commission so that we may buy some tools and things that we are needing for upkeep in our pioneer cemeteries. Mike Winter came on board with us, helped us out a lot when going in and, going in and seeing exactly what we needed to have when it came to the bare necessities. We've since then went through and itemized everything that we absolutely had to have this year, and it came from necessity to use and for safety for ourselves and volunteers that we'll be using. And our total estimate came to three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars in seventy cents. There will be some costs to come off once Gilman fills out some proper paperwork for county discounts. So as of right now, that would be the high end of that. I know some people were wondering maybe the necessity of why we would need such tools, so that was, is why we went ahead and made a copy of the bylaws. If you'd like to go to page three of the bylaws, in section two, it basically shows you the overall maintenance. And this can be anywhere from locating and defining legal boundaries of the burial ground, providing and maintaining access to the burial ground from a public way, resetting, restoring, straightening, and recording all monuments, leveling and seating the cemetery ground and accessways, constructing fences where they are, where there are none, and repairing existing fences, destroying and cleaning up detrimental plants, noxious weeds, and ranked vegetation, and mapping and recording of each such burial grounds. I can see why some of these tools, of course, are absolutely necessary for us to carry this out, but also is keeping these pioneer cemeteries because of the damage they are, are taking on every day. Because obviously, we all know time waits for nothing or no one. If there is any questions that you guys have for me at this time for any of the necessary items needed, please feel free to ask. If there aren't, or is one thing I would like to comment on, we're very excited to have Cory France come on as the upkeep to help us out. He is taking on the twenty said cemeteries for his contract. He is only volunteering for two cemeteries to take on his own, and those are near his home. And we are very, very gracious for him to help out and do so. As in, for to do anything else of the, you know, in the total of eighty-six cemeteries in all, no, Cory will not be helping that. That would be volunteers or the actual cemetery commission themselves going out and upkeeping these cemeteries ourselves. It, of course, is all volunteer.
Can I have a question for you? Are you working through the commissioners on this?
Have we been? We actually have been working with commissioners as much as possible. Zane has been really wonderful about working with us. I haven't been able to keep Barker in the loop. I think it's just communication on his end, getting back with me, but as in with Zane, yes, we have.
Are you, are you dealing with the commissioners with the liability that could be happening in those cemeteries?
Yes, we've actually went through said meetings and went through forms and for volunteers to sign and release to the county, anything like that, that we're covered and protected in that sense.
Now, you're saying you need three thousand dollars, some money in equipment?
Correct.
Where's the, where's the equipment at, that we used to have, some of that equipment?
It was auctioned off, actually, and we were able to see the copy of the auctioned items from the last cemetery and all the costs that were given to us, but absolutely nothing was kept that we were aware of.
So we have no equipment whatsoever for the cemetery board?
No, sir. Anything that we have right now at this time that we've obtained, we've either obtained by volunteers donating to us, or we have went out to auctions ourselves and purchased them out of our own pocket and donated.
I'm not sure that you guys don't need to be working with the county commissioners... pretty close with the tools. That's going to be the responsibility. It's going to be owned by the county. Where is this stuff going to be?
Well, at this time, we have permission to store all of the said tools that we have purchased and have had donate to us at the old cemetery site on top of Michigan, I believe. Cemetery building is where we have them at this time. We would love for that to be our...
Is that through the commissioners? I don't think it's through the commissioners.
Yes, we are given permission to store at this time. We are not said that we are completely located in that facility. Just permission to store our tools and everything under lock and key. But we would love to have that designated as our spot to be able to keep our tools.
I think the commissioners have got the authority to do that. They're the only ones that have the authority to put you in that building and...
And we have actually went through and contacted with Mayor Urban for a walk-through with Mr. Job and Zane Bedore. We walked through Visteon just to be able to get some furniture for us to use. You know, of course, we don't want to obtain any new costs. If we have things that we have in our county that are usable and can be transferred over, let's do that, and why come out of pocket for anything more? So we went up there, we got a few things that we needed for the furniture if we were able to use the designated area at this time at the cemetery building. And Mr. Job has that list. We've already given the list to Mayor Urban that we need from the Visteon plant, from some of the furniture we would like to use, and we also gave it to Mr. Zane Bedore.
Can you catch me up to speed real quick? In the last meeting, they weren't asking for permission to store anything. They're working through the commissioners. They had brought a number of lists from a number of vendors, and looking at the list, I was concerned about that we weren't necessarily comparing apples to apples with the different vendors, and that's why they've come back today.
Well, the one list I see here where they need a truck, is that?
No, that's not here. We didn't ask for any trucks, sir.
Well, it was in the minutes of our meeting that somebody asked for a truck.
We mentioned a truck.
Isn't it?
Yeah, we mentioned it in the last meeting.
I think that's when we asked where the location of the old cemetery truck was, because it was also auctioned off, and somebody...
No.
Was it auctioned...who owns it then?
It's in the county.
The cemetery department owns that blue truck.
The gray cemetery department.
There is cemetery department that we bought with cemetery tax dollars.
Okay, and he retains it at this time?
Cory's been using the truck to hold brush horse, and we don't have it.
We don't have it. We're not requesting one. We were just asking where that one was, if we were able to use it, and that was theirs.
Well, I applaud all of you for doing what you do.
Thank you.
I'm the old cemetery supervisor. All the equipment that was up there in that county building, where's it at? Because they're saying there are no weed eaters, no chainsaws, no nothing.
Tripods gone.
It was up there when I left.
Well, there was a listing of things that were auctioned off. I gave that to the cemetery commission, then there was a question about what happened to the money from the auction. I went and item by item, divided everything out. There was some stuff for the highway that was auctioned at the same time. I divided everything out, put the highways money that was received from Coons from the auction in the highway fund, and put the money from things that were auctioned that were the cemeteries, and put them in the cemetery fund.
May I speak?
How much is in the cemetery fund right now?
Hold on, I'm not sure if I can access it from here, maybe I can.
And while Debbie's looking at it, Martin, a quick question. I know that we appreciate, we've heard from you at several different meetings, one of the issues was to see what it was going to take to hire a contractor to take care of the cemeteries before a decision could be made about the funds remaining. So I don't know if we're to that point.
Nothing has been turned in to us as a commission at looking into contracting?
No, I'm talking about, again...
He's been handling that.
Okay.
What might be available in the cemetery fund after contracting for the care? I think that was one of the contracts that's just been...
I don't have the new program. Look at what it was.
Debbie's close.
I guess I got a question for Barker or Jackson commissioners. I mean, are you guys working with them, or have you considered...I mean, I know the boards want to do some of this volunteer stuff, but have you considered looking into somebody taking care of them, other cemeteries on a contract deal in that cemetery budget?
We have looked at that.
And I know this board wants to do something there, but it's going to be a working cemetery board, and what happens when, if these people take a notion to resign? So here we go, again, back to that same thing, like we had.
That is the very reason that last year, the county commissioners contracted with, took this and contracted Cory to take care of the eighteen or twenty cemeteries that's out in the rest of the world. The cemetery commission said that they want volunteer and take care of the ones that's back in, off the road in somebody's field that would normally view it once in the spring and it was bought. Now, the cemetery commission called me once, asked me about buying equipment. I told them that they need to come into the commissioners with their list, we can see what's reasonable and what we want to do, and they haven't been there, so I have no idea what they want.
So, well, that's where they need to go.
That's right.
There's forty-one thousand, two eighty-four, forty-five in the fund. There is...
They just signed a contract with somebody today.
There is a contract, yeah, for twenty-one thousand.
You realize that you had all the cemeteries done for twenty-one thousand and a little bit more change? You all realize that?
No, that wasn't last year's, because that time...
One hundred and seven cemeteries, folks. Not eighty-six.
Eighty-six was not twenty-one thousand.
All these.
Yes.
One hundred and seven.
Seven, and all.
And there's no way somebody's not doing for what's left of it?
Nope. We've actually, as a commission, of course, I'm here right now looking for funding, changing funds and transferring funds, but we've looked into as a commission as doing adoption programs, basically, for some of these cemeteries, where people will actually have some of the organizations, where we have churches that would like to. We've had the American Auxiliary, American League Auxiliary for Women contact us, but they would like to adopt a cemetery. There are things we can start up in our facility, but even with Said So, twenty-five organizations, one cemetery at least, a hundred and seven cemeteries.
What I'm saying is that you need to go through the commissioners first before.
And we have, and we have submitted all this information.
If you have churches and them volunteering their services, those guys are going to have to authorize that because of the liability that is going to be to the county.
They've already talked to us about that.
So Barker said he hadn't even...
Barker, I can honestly say, I have called you, and I have left messages. I have never gotten a return call from you. Yes.
I am secretary and everything may...
I'm not talking about your secretary, I'm talking about your cell phone, sir. I'm talking about your home phone, sir. I called them. I've left a message. You have never returned a phone call. But someone in that commissioner's room knew you called me, because you didn't call me back, and that was Mr. Bedore, and he contacted me.
For real?
Then I'm a liar, sir. You're calling me a liar. No, you're calling me a liar. You're more than a threat.
That's just my only questions about that is that you got to do the commissioners.
We invited the commissioners and the council members.
We have sent, every single one of them.
But the commissioners are the guys that's going to make that decision, of course.
We have sent letters in each one of their mailboxes. We have dropped them off in the auditor's office ourselves, have them placed and invited. We have also had one of our members call each and every single one. That's how I obtain the cell phone and the home phone numbers.
They have the five hundred thousand.
When it comes, when it comes to working both ways, we've reached our handout. No one gets back.
There's nothing we can do until the commissioners authorize this stuff for us to do.
Okay.
Can't do nothing.
We applaud everything that you have done, the bylaws, the signs, the cemetery commission, and the tremendous amount of time and effort that you've put in it. And I think it's just some confusion on what's the next step. And normally, we would receive a request for an appropriation or a line item change or authorization to spend out of a particular line item. But again, that all does need to start flowing, come through the commissioners. You've done a great job, and I thank Mike Winton also for helping to work with you and to get down to this specific list. Again, until they opened the contracts and awarded the contracts, there was no information. We didn't know what funds would be available to apply to your volunteer organization. And again, I think Debbie has indicated the forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four in the line item, probably that twelve hundred and eighty-four was proceeds from the sale of equipment that was there.
No.
You're saying, no?
I don't have that information.
The auction, the auction, they only got eight hundred dollars for the auction.
Yeah, it was seven hundred and seven dollars.
Yeah, and it was not all the tools.
Mathematically, seven forty-six.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll turn, I go in.
At the last council meeting, they did have a request of transfer for a certain amount of funds to go from one line item to another line item. They were just asking that those funds be transferred to, that the commissioners still had to approve, give them the green light on it. They were asking us to just transfer funds from one line item to another line item. We weren't given our blessing on the equipment. All I was trying to do in the last meeting was just say, "Hey, let's make sure that we're being smart about this and going about this judiciously and being prudent in what we're doing with the taxpayer's dollars." That was my intention only. So they did do that the last meeting.
Okay.
And if I may say something, we are already two months behind. I don't know how many times you guys have mowed your grass, but these cemeteries are up to here, and the longer it goes, the harder it will be.
May I speak to this, the part about the equipment?
Would you step forward, please? Introduce yourself and...
I'm Randy Morghed, former cemetery supervisor. In that building up there that they gave us, as you walk in the front door, a little aisle way, maybe three, four foot wide, went both ways, north and south.
Do you have equipment in that building?
No, it's not there now.
It's gone.
They took it out the same day that I quit.
Okay.
Okay? And nobody seems to know where it's at. When you walked in that door...
It may have been auctioned.
No, it was an auction, not the equipment that I had and used. When you walked in that door, to your right-hand side, in a gray bucket was the chain hoist that went with the tripod. Everybody says, "They can't find that chain hoist." There was also two headstones laying there. Right next to that was a burrow that had two set of rubber boots in it. Right next to that, let's see, was the little air conditioner.
I'm sorry, is John Walters came up and took care of the tombstones?
Yes, I know that. I talked to John three weeks ago. As you come through into that aisle way...
Is this pertinent to additional items being missing that we should perhaps proceed on, or...
It's pertinent to, that equipment is already there. Why spend money that you don't have to spend if these people are going to do the cemeteries?
Is the equipment...
There's no equipment. Other than what we've taken.
It's been taken to the highway department. I think Bill Gray has some of it over here. I'm not sure on that one. But there was a tripod there. John Walters bought that at the auction, was it for fifty dollars, okay? Straight in front of that was two weed eaters, two brand-new weed eaters, one bought in two thousand and ten, one bought in two thousand and eleven. Menkaa, I believe is what's their name on it, but we bought them because it had a five-year warranty on it. My partner, the helper that was with me those years, is sitting right behind me here. He can tell you everything else. In front of that was the chainsaw.
Okay.
A brand-new chainsaw.
Do you have a list of all that equipment, perhaps if we can take this offline?
The list for all that equipment was given in the auditor's office. It was up there in that building, behind my desk. It had the tags on it that we get from them to tag the equipment.
That was all in the system.
And the secretary, not Gail, but the other one that takes care of the bills, we were working on what was supposed to be there, because they had us down for stuff from back in nineteen ninety-seven that I'd never seen. The truck that they sold was old number fifteen, I believe is what they called it. They sold that as a cemetery truck. I've never seen that truck. My truck...
They tried to give it to me when I was cemetery supervisor.
And he was cemetery supervisor in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, wasn't he, Daryl? That new truck sitting right over here, just like I said. Okay, in front of those weed eaters was two riding mowers. One of them brand-new, we had bought in two thousand and ten. I had two hours on that mower, the motor blew up. I had to take it back, and they pretty much had it all this time. There's not more than, probably not more than three hours on it.
So perhaps that's still available?
Yeah, it's down at the county highway department, but there's nothing up there. But along with that was an older model, a two thousand, it was either two thousand and five or two thousand and six, and these were all gradually mowers.
All right.
That's the one I rode all the time. I never even rode the new one, just the one time. There was two wheelbarrows, one open and one brand-new.
Would you be willing to meet with these, our volunteers, to get the list from the auditor's office, and perhaps we could put our hands on that equipment? You're familiar with it, or, you know, we can get the list?
Sir, I requested a list from the auditor, and they said there was no list. I couldn't pull up the list.
Exactly, which is the same thing that, excuse me for saying this, but I seen your two thousand, or your April second meeting, and you were ragging on me saying that I didn't do my job, that I hadn't been in these cemeteries since two thousand and six, hadn't done any reports.
We hadn't even reported. We didn't say you didn't do it, we said we didn't have anything recorded.
Would you be willing to meet with the group?
Oh, I'd be willing to meet with them, yeah, yes. But I want this council and the commissioners to know what I've got here, that everybody seems to be saying has disappeared. These are my original copies.
Now, equipment can be assigned from one department.
That was bought with cemetery tax dollars, has to be either given back to the people taking care of the cemeteries or sold. That's one of the reports that I turned in, and you can show the rest of the papers. I turned them in every commissioner meeting and every council meeting. Have you ever seen any of those, Dale?
No.
Why not? They were put in the mailboxes every time.
Well, February twenty-ten was before I came on council.
Exactly. But those still should have been available somewhere.
Well, perhaps something more recent? But again, you know, rather than speculating, these people have done a lot of time that you meet regularly every other week. When is your next scheduled meeting? Pardon?
Not next Monday, but the next Monday.
Shirley?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to the commissioners for them to, for their board to go to the commissioners and get this coming through the right channels.
Okay.
But we're not making, we're asking for the funds just to be appropriated. We're not asking to spend.
When the county commissioners request that, then we should, that's when we should act on.
We were told we had to request.
Who told you that?
The commissioners told us we had to move. We had to get the line item moved, and then we had to go to them to ask them for our tools and to be spending it.
The money had to be...
Now, I talked to Corinne, and I told you, you put that transfer in, that it isn't the cemetery commission's money.
No, I'm not, I'm going to say that I thought it was the cemetery commission. I said that I'd like the money to be...
I said that it needed to be signed by a commissioner, and it laid there on my table, and no commissioner came in to sign it. It's, the transfer request is sitting there without a commissioner's signature.
It's got to be a commissioner's request.
I'm not going to be, I'm just saying that's the way things are done.
The process, the process.
No, that's fine, it's a process.
Because Lenny took it.
No, I have it right here, and it is not signed.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been moved. Is there a second? To move this discussion back to the commissioners so that we can get a signed request for transfer of funds. I know that seems like perhaps going around the circle twice, but, you know, I'm not certain this council doesn't have the authorization to proceed. We have to proceed with a signed request for transfer.
Okay, so you know that now, more than is going to be done with the cemeteries, and that's going to put us another month and a half behind, because you guys only meet once a month. That means we have to come to you again next month and request the line item moved, and it's going to be two weeks after that.
And we're still not spending it. We're just in it.
Perhaps, perhaps. If the commissioners approve and sign the sheet, there may be... If the commissioners approve and sign the sheet, there may be cause for a special meeting. You're gonna have to take that up with, with commissioners. It's been moved and seconded that we ask you to go back to the commissioners. Do we have any other discussion? And how, of the council?
Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Jim Wolfe? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry, that's not the answer you're looking for, but I think that's the most direct route to settling all the questions. And I, Mr. Morhead, I, any other information like this in the second page that we can work together, we appreciate it.
I just have a few more things to say, if you don't mind.
Would you mind coming back here under the patron concerns, so we can finish the agenda? Okay. Next item, additional appropriations. The first item on the agenda?
It's mine.
It's Debbie's. Auditors ineligible deductions contractual services. Does everybody have a copy of that?
This is the same thing I've done the last couple of months, and this is to pay SRI, who is doing all of the work and sending out the information on the ineligible deductions. And I am requesting an additional of two thousand dollars in order to pay the bill for that, for their work on it. There's money in the fund, that's totally, no part of county general or anything like that, it's just...
The contractual services, the report, what, is there action that the auditor's office then can take or...
We call, at that point, they send, when we find that someone has, for instance, someone has two homesteads, or they weren't eligible to claim a homestead, or they have a homestead here and a homestead in another county, then we can remove that homestead and we can, we can bill back for three years and collect money the time that it was ineligible for them to receive the deduction.
Okay.
And that goes into this ineligible production fund, and that's for use for, thanks for the auditor.
So there's an opportunity to collect back, back for the services?
Last month, Debbie, we, we approved one of these for fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, this is another, they get, they get thirty percent of whatever is collected.
Okay, so that's two thousand, that's thirty percent of what they collected in the last month, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, since the last time they billed, yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm moved to approve this additional request for the auditor's office.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Item B, Bay County nine-one-one. Do we have anyone here? Speak to Carrie's request. Debbie, are you familiar with a budget line balance, fifteen hundred, request for ten thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the radio maintenance contract for April first of thirteen through March thirty-first of fourteen?
The only thing I know about it is what you see on this paper, that's all I know.
This is a service contract that nine-one-one has to pay every year for their equipment over there. It's nothing new. I can't remember the amount last, from last year, but this year she's asking for ten thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
That's on the new radio equipment, new?
Is this with ER, is this with ERS, is that?
I don't, I don't know.
I think that's normally where their mobile contracts are for.
Any other questions? What?
I think she needs to come in and explain it to us, because that's one of the things that we've had in the past, you come in and explain it to us, especially for an additional.
Do you have a motion to table the request?
That's, I'll make it a motion.
Second? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's second now?
Um, Mark Knopf. I see, Kim Bridge, Jerry.
I'm trying to be short and sweet here. I've got two requests. One is for Bridge sixty-one, is for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, this doesn't come out of your county general, this comes out of Kim Bridge's fund, so you understand that's a separate fund, a whole by itself, has nothing to do with county general. It's an old concrete bridge right now, and it's got a lot of rust on the I-beams underneath of it, they're exposed. The bridge needs to be replaced, and our last report it says, what these remarks, it said replace, is what the remarks were. What it's gonna be is a, is a, a single-span precast concrete I-beam bridge. It'll be sixty-five feet long, and it'll have a clear roadway of twenty-four feet. And I'm in the process of trying to buy a right-of-way for it right now. This is not a federal-funded bridge, that's why I'm asking for this. The federals have changed their way of appropriating funds. I've got a project right now that we're building that's under federal funds. I built another one that just finished last fall, and another one finished about a year and a half ago, that were all built with federal funding. Federal funding is eighty-twenty, we provide twenty percent, federal government provides eighty percent on those. But this bridge was not eligible for that, couldn't get it on the list. I've got a couple of other bridges I'd like to get on their list, but I can get them one. But anyway, for this bridge, I'm asking three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build this bridge. I don't know exactly what it's gonna cost, because there has to be a bid process going through to do that, so that'll happen at later.
This is Bridge sixty-one over Village Creek in Jennings Township?
I, I...
I was looking, I was looking at the map earlier, and I was hoping, and maybe if you could point it out for us.
I'll be glad to point it out.
And, and then while you're there, talk about Bridge sixty-seven as well.
Okay.
And if you, it would maybe be helpful for us as we come in to look at this, could we have a legend? You've got the pinpoint numbers.
We've got a legend up here of what these are, but not where they're at.
Right, not where they are. So I thought if you could maybe give us a legend with all the bridge numbers at the side, we could take a look at that ahead of time before you come in.
That's fine, that's fine. Bridge sixty-one is right here, and it's right next to Charlie Grubbs's farm, if you know where Charlie lives over here. This is Wellsview, you go out Wellsview, go by the Gettingers Farms out here, and then this is three fifty right here, and it's about, oh, it's about a half a mile north of three hundred south, right there, is where this bridge is at. It's a little narrow bridge, it's a, it's a little concrete bridge, and it's got a lot of structural issues underneath of it, and that's why I'm asking to try to replace it, because it's gonna fall down one of these days.
Don't want that to happen.
No, we don't want that to happen.
We had a, we had a situation about five years ago, Russ, Russ probably remembers this, they had a bridge fall down up in, in, uh, no, no.
Minnesota, no. Was it Minneapolis?
Yeah, Minneapolis-St. Paul, thank you, appreciate that. Minneapolis-St. Paul, had a bridge fall down. Well, that same morning, I came to the commissioners' meeting asking for a inventory of all the smaller bridges less than twenty feet. These are all bridges that are twenty feet or longer, and we have a bunch of bridges that are less than twenty feet, which are just as dangerous as they fall, if one of these falls, and you know. So, they granted me the money to go ahead and have that small inventory done, okay? In that small inventory, when the inspector was out there doing it, we had one on eight hundred south down here, he called me up, he says, you need to get down here now. I went down there, the whole bottom of that bridge was falling down. We hadn't noticed it, because when you drive across it, you couldn't see that, but you had to get underneath it. And it's a encased concrete bridge, a lot of times you can't tell what's going on inside, it was encased concrete bridges. And so I closed that bridge, and he rebuilt it. We had one out here on four fifty east, and that one there was about to go down, and I was standing there with a semi going across it, and we could watch it bow as the semi was going across it. But he caught that in that inspection. So there was two things that you were saying by, by having that inspection.
Okay, good. While you're there, would you point out number, what is it, sixty?
It's Carshol Township sixty-seven is what that should be. What I done, when I, when I done those inventories of those bridges that are less than twenty feet, in order to, to have a inventory of those, I, each bridge, I give a number within the township. So when I called those bridges out there, the regular bridge numbers go for the major bridges, but these bridge numbers, sixty-seven would be Carshol Township Bridge sixty-seven, there's also sixty-seven in the other township.
Okay.
So this is Carshol Township sixty-seven. And it's down here on South Bray Road, it's down here on South Bray Road, and it's just, just south of, of one fifty south right here, you know, where Clarence Fishoff lives. Clarence Fishoff, it's just south of his house right there, just before you get down to where Johnny Bunzidog used to live, if you know where that's at. It's a culvert, it's a culvert, it's not a bridge, it's a culvert. It's four feet in diameter, and I'm gonna replace it with a seventy-foot piece in there, four feet in diameter. And what's going on is under that one, and there's a lot of old culverts out here that are the same way. They, they had the horse and buggy, they had, you had an old stone arch-type culvert there, and then they added on to them. Well, the stone arch is still fine, but the add-on is falling apart, is what's going on. They had an old culvert in there, and it's completely rusted out, so I'm just gonna replace the whole thing, it's easier and be much safer in the future.
Okay. Gentlemen, comments? Russ, Mark, do you have any comments on the three hundred and thirty thousand plus the twenty-five thousand?
I'll make a motion. Jerry, do you have, you already have bids on this bridge?
Oh, no, no, I gotta have money for it.
So you're, you're, you're feeling that it's gonna be three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, gonna take all that?
I haven't finished paying for engineering yet, and then I've got construction engineering to go through, I haven't paid for any right-of-way yet, so I've got a lot of other issues that are, yeah, you know, whatever.
And it may be six months or seven months before you get this done, maybe a year.
Well, hopefully I'm gonna build it yet this year, that's why I'm asking.
Because of the right-of-ways you're gonna get.
Yeah. I, I just never know how those things are gonna go.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we appropriate that.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, the three hundred and thirty thousand in addition to the twenty-five thousand, both? Is that motion for arrest, both?
Yes, both of them.
Both of them?
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Don't spin it all in one place, is it, Jerry?
Most of it is gonna go in one place.
Yeah.
Item D, county share of edit, reduction to county planning. Burton?
Well, what, what that one, I'll speak to that only because, remember in the meeting and, along about two meetings ago, and you wanted the fifteen thousand reduced out of county share of edit for that fifteen thousand, it was county planning? And first you said you just didn't want it, you wanted approval if anything was spent, and it came down to, the only way to do that would be to actually reduce the appropriation.
Reduce it, then if they want it suddenly, come back next.
Yes, and ask for an additional. So that's what that is.
I'll make a motion, that we reduce it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the mate to that one is item E, county share of edit, payment to economic development group.
Madam President.
Fund two fifty-one?
May I correct the record on something that was asked of me earlier, and it was regarding the cash on hand that the economic development group has available to it. I misspoke, Mr. Wolfe, that, that number's five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that we have available to this.
Qualification. Again, some of those funds are restricted?
No, those are not restricted.
Those are the not restricted.
Those are cash available.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill.
I'll make a motion that we reduce it fifty thousand, that we won't appropriate it.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, Debbie.
I'd like to have a roll call.
Jim, would you repeat your motion? I'm sorry, you made a motion to?
Uh, reduce it, may not give an additional appropriation of fifty thousand that they're asking for.
So your motion is to deny the additional request?
Right.
Or to reduce it from fifty to another amount?
No, just reduce it to old fifty.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
From Mark? Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm curious as to why we want to not fund EDG?
We're funding EDG, we are. We're funding, they've got...
Why aren't we gonna match what the city's doing?
The city matches what we're doing.
They're gonna, they're gonna contribute a hundred and ten thousand, that's what they've asked for. So are you guys saying we don't need a full-time director?
At this time, that's my opinion, they got...
Who's gonna, who's gonna do this?
Wait, wait a second. They've got five hundred thousand dollars, that they can use that money to get their full-time director, and then if the full-time director proves theirself, I'll be the first one to come back and ask for money. Until they prove their, prove theirself, I can't, I can't waste any more of the taxpayers' money.
Mr. Long, what does a five hundred thousand go for, please?
That money is used for projects that we are, we, we use for economic development. If we have someone that comes in that we need to spend money to attract them, or to make trips, or whatever, whatever the need is toward bringing that company to Connersville, that money is available to do that. Now, if we utilize all of the money that we have available in our general fund for salaries, then we have no money for projects. You know, we're looking at, right now, we have a person that's on our payroll who is administrative assistant, and she doesn't have health insurance. Now, we know that through Obamacare, she's going to have health insurance at some point, she's gonna be, we're gonna be required to provide that. So that's money that we're gonna have to spend that's out of the, out of that general fund. So there are things that any business and any corporation, in this case, a, a nonprofit organization, has to use to attract business to, and that's, that's the job that we have, and that's to, to bring business to this community. Not only new businesses to this community, but the existing businesses that are in this community that come to us and need assistance from time to time. And, and so if we utilize every dollar we have for funding a director, then I'm not sure we need a director, because he's not gonna have any funds to, to utilize to do his job.
How's this gonna impact you?
Well, how it's gonna impact us is that I'm gonna resign as chairman of the board. I made that commitment back when I took the position, that if we did not get the funding necessary to move economic development forward in this community, then my time is better spent running my business and doing the things that I feel like people are in support of. Not only am I the president of the economic development group, but I also sit as the chair, the chairperson for the Hope Pregnancy Care Center, and I'm intimately involved in that organization, turn my attention to those things as long, along with my business. And that's not, that, that's not important, because there are, as you've seen tonight, excellent people that sit on this board, that, that work hard toward developing economic opportunities for this community. Any of those could replace me very easily. But personally, I feel like that if this, if this council does not believe in economic development to the point of spending an additional fifty thousand dollars to attract a qualified economic development director, I'm not going to put my time into helping this community do something that it doesn't want. And you speak for the, for the, for the constituents in your, in your voting district, you represent them, so you're speaking on their behalf. Just that simple. We have opportunities that we are working right now that are very, very favorable toward this community. I would hate to see us make the statement that economic development isn't important. And that's a statement that's being made here tonight.
No, you're not, Bill, I'll disagree with you. You guys got five hundred thousand dollars right now that you can work with, you've got that money to work with. The taxpayers would like to see something, now their money, positive stuff come out.
There are many... There are many positive things coming out, Jim.
What's coming out?
Well, I'm not at liberty to speak to what we have, and you know that.
January first, wait a minute, I want your recumen. January first, we had your economic development director in here saying by March thirty-first, he was gonna make an announcement, thirty-five hundred jobs in this community. Today is what, May the eighth, thirty, whatever it is, thirty-some days over. It seems like every time that you guys need money, you got something coming, and after something, the money's given, or you get what you want, and nothing ever pops up.
Jim, let me answer that this way, and I'm gonna try to be as straightforward as I can be with it. Whatever you decide here tonight, it's not gonna affect me one bit. I, it won't. I'm gonna go back to trucking, and I'm gonna do what I do for a living. So if you choose not to do this, that's not gonna change my life one bit. I can't speak to why the economic development chairman came here in January and made that statement. I've been on the board five years, and I can assure you that I did not know of any jobs or any company that we were talking to at that time that was gonna generate thirty-five hundred jobs to this community within the next six months or a year.
Three months, wasn't that?
I don't, I don't know what he said. All I'm saying is, I can't speak to him.
I personally did not hear that. I did hear that we expected to have information about it, that we were talking to these people on a weekly basis, and that we could have, you know...
He said at the end of March thirty-first that he would probably be announcing thirty-five hundred jobs.
I, we can check back into Debbie's minutes.
But Jim, here's the thing that you're saying, you're saying that you measure economic development by what the jobs that you think we should be bringing into this community. You're not taking into consideration or giving any value at all to economic development as it stands for the people that are already here, the companies that are already here, the Fayette County Regional Health Center, the General Electric, the Stans, the people that employ, the people that we have here in this community today. As I said, economic development is the lifeblood of a community, and if you don't have it, we're gonna dry up and blow away. Because as I said earlier in my remarks, companies just don't stumble into town saying that they're gonna come here. You have to compete for those jobs, you have to be in front of those opportunities, you have to be involved with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, you have to build those relationships with those surrounding economic development groups, so that you can position your county and your city and your community to get their fair share of those opportunities that come our way, and to also take care of the jobs that we currently have here. That's economic development. I was up at the landscape company that just opened up here a couple of weeks ago, and if they're ribbon-cutting, and if it were not for economic development, that business wouldn't be here today. And so that's economic development at its finest, is allowing people who live here that wanna do business here, that has a dream, who has an opportunity to do something, to help support their dream, help them get to where they can open up a business, and not only does it benefit them, but it benefits the community because those dollars stay in Connersville. Instead of going to Richmond or to Franklin County to get mulch and shrubberies and the things that I've had to do in the years that I've been here, we can come and buy locally. That's economic development. And so, you know, is fifty thousand dollars a lot of money? Yes, it is. But trust me, I spend more than that on fuel every week for my trucking company. So it's, yes, it's a lot of money, I don't misunderstand it, but in this grand scheme of things, it isn't. And as I said earlier, you have to spend money to make money, and you cannot save yourself into profitability, nor can you save yourself into getting jobs. If you're cutting the budget, or if you're refusing to add to the budget so that we can move forward, I can't speak to the previous administration, the previous chairman or the people that were in charge of economic development. I don't have a horse in its race, I don't have a hidden agenda, I don't gain one dollar of my revenue from anything that I do here in this community. I have, my business is generated outside of Fayette County, I get zero dollars, as I've said before. So I'm doing this for one reason, it's because I believe in this community, I believe that the people of this community deserve jobs, they deserve to have a viable economic development effort going on, and I believe that it is going on. And I don't want to take away from anything that we've done up until now, there's been a lot of hard work put into everything that we've done. So in no way am I casting aspersions on anybody that came before me. All I'm saying is that we've reduced the board, we've made it more lean, we've made, as you can see, the people that we have on this board are first-quality people that represent us in a broad spectrum of industries and businesses. And I believe that we're gonna move this community forward. But if you decide to not help us go there, then you're gonna get what you paid for it, like the old Fram commercial. You can pay me now, or you can pay me later, but you will pay. Because those jobs will be here.
You're, Jim, your opinion, I've got my opinion, I've been listening to a lot of the taxpayers. Here a while back, this council stepped up and gave four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars for Stans. And I think before it's over with, within a month or so, we're gonna have to borrow money and pay for some county bills, aren't we, Debbie? As for advancement or something?
I just did an advance draw on our state tax.
Okay, done an advance draw.
That was for county general.
Okay, we gave four-hundred-and-forty thousand. The other day, I was asked to make a banner saying, "Welcome, Andy." They asked if I would make it, I said, "Yeah," I'd done that out of my own pocket, I believe in economic development, but I don't believe that every time we turn around, we should throw money into it until we see something out of it. If this works, if you use your money, if this works, I'll be the first one line to give you money. That's like the other day when they asked me to make that sign up there. If somebody come down and look at the Bisson plant, said, "Welcome, Andy," I made that sign. In fact, I got called, I think it was on Friday morning, can you have it done by Saturday? Linda and I've done it, and we had it up there. But except for economic development, if I think that we need it now, we'll get it now. But it's, I just won vote, so you're gonna have to convince the rest of them.
Well, I just want to say one more thing, and it was referring to the line item that was discussed earlier about the EIDD, and Mr. Flum said he believed that that was an important thing to put money toward. My question about that is this, if you're going to spend money to be part of an economic development group, who's gonna represent us? Who's gonna be that person that's gonna go and represent Fayette County and the city of Connersville in that organization? Why spend that money if you don't have a representative? Why would you say that's important and this isn't? It doesn't make sense to me.
I've got a question. You talk about a full-time director.
Yes, sir.
Since you reorganized your board, which was too big to start with.
Yes.
Have you considered a part-time director?
Part-time director?
So a part-time director could represent...
I'm a part-time director.
What Mr. Flum says.
I'm a part-time director.
You're the chairman of the board, so you're a part-time...
I'm the chairman, and I'm serving as a part-time director in lieu of us having a director, and...
Yeah, but you have a job. I'm talking about a part-time...
Well, so would a part-time person.
A part-time director's gonna have to have one, too.
Not necessarily a retired guy can do it.
Not just anybody can do this.
A retired manufacturing guy can do it.
Not just anybody can do this. No, you cannot just have anybody do it. You look at the big companies that have marketing directors, they don't just have some guy come off the street and do it.
I appreciate your opinion, Mike.
I got a question. I was approached by the person that you appointed to look for a director.
Yes, sir.
He said to you, I think that director, that person heading up that search should come from your board. He was told that nobody on your board wanted to do it.
That's not true.
That's what he told me.
Well, I'm telling you, I'm the chairman of the board, I asked him to serve in that capacity, and it wasn't anything about no one else was willing to serve in that job. He said he thought, I'll tell you exactly the conversation, the conversation was, he came to me and he says, "Bill, I think someone from your board ought to be the chairman of the search committee." And I said, "No, I don't agree with that, I would like for you to do it, because I believe in you, and you will be, you'll be objected, you won't be a part of the board, and you're the right person to do it." And he accepted that position.
That's not the way he told me.
I'm sorry.
But anyway, but I know you told us in the meeting, you did not even want to be president, and you took it because nobody else wanted to be president.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why do you have this board if nobody wants to participate and do these things?
I can't speak for anyone else on the board, it takes a lot of time to do this job. I, when I was nominated for the position, when we found out Mr. Bell was not going to continue to serve, I was nominated to be elected, or to be voted on.
Serve on the board.
To serve on the, excuse me, well, I was already on the board, but I was asked to, they nominated me to be the chairman. And I made the statement at the time that they did, that I did not feel that I was the right person for that position, simply from the standpoint that I am the brother-in-law of the mayor of Connersville, and I felt like that I would not have the credibility to serve in that capacity, and I did not want to do anything that was gonna diminish the importance of the economic development board. And I made that very clear to our members at the time, and unfortunately, we had no one else that would be nominated to stand against me, and I was it for that reason. And that's exactly why I'm here. I don't believe that, I still don't believe I'm the person for that job, because of my relationship with the mayor. But I am, if those who know me know that I am my own man, and it doesn't matter if the president of the United States was my brother-in-law, I stand up for what I believe, I protect what I am responsible for, and I think if the mayor were here, he would agree with that. So that's my position on that.
May I say just a moment, Bill, please? There were thirteen members that voted, oh, thirteen voted for Bill. We wanted him to be our leader. It wasn't anything that was twisted our hearts, or, we just, as a group, voted. He was qualified. We felt like he could get the job done.
See, thank you.
We wouldn't have done it, though, if we didn't...
Well, thank you for that, Margaret. There have been many things that probably have been done, not necessarily incorrectly, but I don't think that we've had the sensitivity as a board to the fact that we need to be more open, we need to share information better, and since I have been chairman, I can assure you, we've had, as I said, we've had two-site visits, this company that is considering us in both of those occasions. We have had people from the council here, we've had commissioners, we've had city councilmen, all participate in those site visits and be part of that process. I believe that it's important that we be inclusive, and that everybody be part of what we're doing. I have made that commitment to this, to anyone that I've talked to about economic development since I've been chairman. I believe that it's important that we make everybody a part of the process, because we're all stakeholders in this, we all have something to either gain or lose from what we do in economic development, and it's important, it's important to all of us. Although I don't derive any revenues from this city and this county as far as my business is concerned, I would love someday to be in a position to bring trucks to this community and have a terminal here and service this community. If we have jobs and we have products being shipped, I'm hoping that we will be able to do that. I live here, I raised my family here, I've been here longer than I have anywhere else in my life, so this is home, and I care about it.
Thank you, Bill. Mark, you indicated earlier that we had some patrons that we wanted to hear from, and I think this might be the time to hear from there. Gary, would you like to sign in? I think there's a signing sheet up there.
No, there's not, but I think most people know I'm Gary Breitenbaugh. I'll be brief. First of all, just briefly to speak about regional economic development groups, state, regional, local. There's a lot of talk right now about these groups in general being self-fulfilling entities that generate their own income and exist primarily, well, not primarily, but exist to be sure they stay in existence. The ethanol project I'll use as a backdrop for a good example. Everybody, listen, first of all, everybody wants economic development, okay? Like if you disagree with somebody on the school board, why, you hate children? So don't come up with, what, don't you want economic development? Everybody wants economic development. That, I mean, I grew up thriving, everybody wants economic development here. But the regional group, let's say EEID, that brought that project to us, the accountants got their money in that project, the lawyers got their money in that project, I forget they had to drill for water that I told them wasn't there, they had to pay for that on the, those people got paid, and we got handed nothing. Other projects come forward, whether it's a TIF bond or whatever, well, we have to hire one of the Indianapolis firms to come down, get Collette down here to handle this one, well, she's gonna get paid, and this person's gonna get paid, and this person's gonna get paid, and there they go again, and we don't get anything. And this has been going on for twenty years. We've done study after study, we've paid Segaty or whatever his name is, Myal Mottar, thirty-whatever grand to say who we are. These people that wanna start businesses are smart, we're not gonna gussy ourselves up and fool them, they're gonna look, they're gonna look on the internet, they're gonna know what our unemployment rate is, and if you try to pitch we can get two of your four-year college degrees here in town, smart people are gonna know what that really means. These people are gonna know what they're looking for, and all the amount of EDG money or these regional groups throw at them hasn't gotten us anything. Roy Bud's group up there in Nonsi, again, Myal Mottar, he's the husband of the president of the university. Has he brought us any jobs? No. A lot of clay pit from shrouds and dead birds, but no jobs. Now, Jim, you and I sat on the, I come here four years as the commissioner, two years on the executive board of EDG. So Jimmy and I sat on that board for two years, right? And we talked quite a bit about stuff, didn't we? Wasn't one of our major problems, and I know this has been addressed, too little, too late, but one of our major problems was we weren't included in any of these high-power negotiations, were we?
No.
Oh, man, what you don't understand, the mayor would tell us, is blah, blah, blah. Now, this money comes from taxpayers, and this entity, our local group, strip the people away from them, it doesn't matter, it's just the structure. So you hand a hundred thousand, two hundred, I don't care what it is, it's multitudes of scores of thousands of dollars. And then there's no accountability. It's really curious, because usually it's business people wanting government to control their spending, and now we're getting money from the government, and the business people in EDG wanna spend it like drunken sailors. But it's a secret, we can't tell you who we're gonna spend the money on, right? Yes, I'm confidential, I mean, yes, heaven forbid that any of that information would get out, and you'll hear it at the rines fifteen minutes later. Confidentiality is, that's just a rouge to hide under. It's a secret gentleman's club, it always has been. And here's some curious things. If this was, you know, this has been a hot topic for a long time, should the money be spent for this, can it be spent for that? Where are the original framers of this? Where are the original framers of the edit tax? They're still here in the community. Why haven't they come out and said, "Well, now, what we were doing, and what really happened is this"? They're at home right now, they're not coming out here and laying their necks on the line. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the elected officials that put that together, and you weren't part of that. The regional groups are a self-fulfilling bunch that maintain their own position, they have no accountability. Roy Bud told me that the city of Anderson put out a hundred... Roy Bud told me that the City of Anderson put out 168 grand for each of those jobs at Nestle. Now, I mean, that's the source, I'm figuring it's a pretty good one. But, so the regional things, even the state, there's an article in the Journal of Rural Sociology about the role of the state, in our case, Indiana, they're not necessarily our friends in this game either. Just real quick here, we did that. On the regional economic development that was in the capital plan, that is a waste of money. It's never brought us one thing. And yes, EEID did disband. They corrupted themselves to death, is what they did, if you read the paper. The STANT money, Madam President, was that edd money?
There were 450,000.
I know how much. Was it edd money?
I know it was.
We had that much edd money just to hand, that was edd money?
No, not all that.
Okay. I just, just a point of clarification, because Barton was saying how good EDG was, that they funded that Roots money. And I know better. The payment on the courthouse, 170 grands in the capital improvement plan. And the no, no, that's only a portion of that payment. Now, somewhere along the line, people had to sit in a room and say, "Okay, we've got this courthouse thing, we've got this edd money, and we're going to pay off clearly the courthouse with the edd money." Because that's how it was pitched, everybody knows. We can argue whoever pays you, but that's all right. So we've got this courthouse, somebody had to sit in a room and say, "Well, let's only pay a little bit of it out of edd." And the rest, the big part, we'll pay out of County General or whatever fund it comes out of. But sure as hell didn't come out of edd. Now, that edd tax is for this courthouse and it's been pirated in economic development. And this is curious, too. And I mean, the original framers have been nowhere up until now, years later. The other curious thing is talking about economic development, which is all under our feet right now, not one mention has been made of our water, not one. I just don't get it either. We're just too slow and don't get that part of resource that nobody else has regionally or southern house. I don't know. It's time to choke it down. It's time to get this money away from people that can just spend it willy-nilly with no accountability. It's time to pull the trigger. We all want economic development. The people that have come here looking for us have been water people. When I heard, and I think I can say this with confidence because I heard the same thing on the radio and read it in the paper, that the new EDG strategy was to make calls rather than answer them. I heard it both on the radio and in the newspaper, those are separate sources, so I think that was said somewhere. Our new strategy after 20 years is to make calls and not get them. It's a brilliant strategy. What did we think of it 20 years ago? Folks, I think this is a waste of taxpayers' dollars. I think Jim's right. We all want economic development. And keep in mind, as County Council members and Commissioners, only a part of what you do is economic development. You would think that's all folks do. You're supposed to run the county. And part of that, of course, is funding or not EDG. But of all the private people in business that are promoting this money be spent for a full-time director, I mean, I just don't get, we have no money. We've laid off people. How in the world can we justify hiring somebody to shoot rockets in the sky? Come look at us. They've already looked at us. You're not going to lead them through, they're going to know what they're doing, right? So the original framers haven't come back. We haven't talked about the one resource that separates us from any place around. Maybe it's a big secret going on, okay? This money should be put to what it was used, what it was meant for and has to pay down the debt. Business people ought to know about debt. You should collect it, not pay it for interest. I mean, we need to pay down that debt. That's what it was for. And stop shooting rockets in the sky.
Thank you.
So that's all I have to say, and all I said I need to say.
I think everybody knows who I am. My name is Richard Hicks. For the last several years, I was working for the city. And I went to several council meetings, several Board of Works meetings, and I keep hearing, I kept hearing from all the directors, "Oh, this is coming, we're going to have this, and this is going to happen." And I'll tell you, Jim, in your business and Russ, in your business, if you guys were successful as EDG has been the last 20-some years, you'd be out of business. So I mean, the only thing I got to say is Gary was right. Now, let's quit spending much money on EDG and pay off the courthouse. Unless that's what the money's made was for, I think, and that's just what I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rick? Have you said everything you have to say?
I mean, they've said everything. I've been preaching, Long, Gary, and the rest of them. The only thing I have to say is you people deserve.
Over here, please, sign in.
People are here to serve taxpayers. It's the physical body of this county. And your responsibility is to the taxpayers, not EDG, is to the taxpayers. People who are driving 40 miles one way to work and paying their edd tax back here. So the only thing I have to say is I just relate everything that's been said behind me. But your job is to take care of the taxpayers, the taxpayers first. And we don't get that from you guys. A hand may contribute for, but we don't get, and we deserve.
My name is Gene Wollinger. I got to get my two cents. Say it again.
Sign your name, please.
Sign your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Kind of like, I don't give any residence. I'm hearing Mr. Long. I really appreciate what he's doing, what he's said, and how he's said it. It's very impressive. I also hear Mr. Wolf. My question is, if there's 500,000 or 550,000 dollars in cash in EDG, and I heard Jim say a number of times that if they need the money, you would certainly bring it up, where's the hassle? Why can't we hire this person out of the 550,000 dollars that's in EDG? And that would then, here's Jim, and if they produce, then Jim, and I'm sure Mr. Flum and the other council members would be more than willing to increase this funding. We're jumping back and forth, we're beating a dead horse. I heard this. I heard Jim say twice, "If you produce, then we'll fund you. If you have the 550,000, use it to hire your director. Put Jim and Mr. Flum and the rest of these folks where they belong, what they've said. We will fund you if you prove it." Does that make any sense? Is that what you're saying, Jim?
That's what I say.
Mr. Flum?
Yes.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Thank you.
And to follow up on Gene's statement, I took the money that we are going to give with EDG, I mean, from the edd money. And I've worked out a formula to where the money will be available next year for EDG if they want it, to use as they want. But this year, I'm saying we appropriate 60,000, that's where I think it should stay. But next year, if they listen to me the way I want to use that money, the money will be available next year. And the county will get what we need to do what we got to do.
Any other comments?
Shirley, I've got a question I'd like to direct to Mr. Long. Bill, first of all, I want to say that both sides of this argument have made some very, very compelling arguments, both pro and con. You and your EDG members have made a very good presentation. I also understand the concerns of the other side of this argument. Now, if the 2013 budget currently sends 60,000 dollars to EDG, this year is almost halfway old. If you hire, do you intend to hire a full-time director?
That's our intention, yes.
Straightaway?
Yes, sir.
That's your intention?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how long that process would take?
We would hope to have him hired by the 1st of August. That's the goal that we set.
By the 1st of August?
If we can go forward, yes.
Okay. And would the money that has already been appropriated then for the 2013 budget year be enough to cover that additional expense for those five, last five months of the year?
Here's what's at stake. For us to be able to go out and attract a qualified economic development director, someone that's not here in this community, someone that has the credentials, that lives outside of this community, who has done the work in this area, which is what I believe we need. We don't need to try to bring someone in and do an on-the-job training. Who's going to train them? We need someone that's experienced, qualified, to do the job. You're not going to be able to attract that individual to this community, to pull up states from wherever he's at and move to Connersville, Indiana, to take a position that's not funded, that's not funded long-term. And that's the problem we have, is it's not the immediate funding as much as it is the long-term and whether or not we're, we can say to that individual, there's going to be funding for the next three to five years. Most of these positions typically turn over in a three-to-five-year timeframe. These individuals come, they'll work in a position for three to five years and they'll leave to go on to a bigger opportunity that they have. And so, but they're looking at that timeframe. They want to know that they're going to have a job. We lost an excellent economic development director in Bill Conia, in my opinion, simply because he was concerned about the funding for his position. And that's the problem that we're going to be faced with again if we go and we go out and try to attract a person. So it's not just about today, it's about long-term. How are we, are we going to commit to funding and supporting and backing economic development in this community long-term so we can go out and get that individual?
Bill, question. Even if we approved or disapproved it today, you still have to come again next year, we would have to try and appropriate the same funds, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we can't, even if we said, "We'll give you a 10-year commitment," not all of us are going to necessarily be here.
That's true.
And so for us to say, and I'm not, I'm being devil's advocate here.
I understand.
Is even if we all sit here and say, we all unanimously have said, "Yeah, we're going to do it, commit to you three to five years." Get new council members in here, they may not feel the same way. So there's still that.
Well, there's no question about that, Mike. And here's the only thing I can say about that. If we don't do what's right today, that person, as everyone says, they read, they look on the Internet and they see, and they read our papers and they see the decisions that we make regarding economic development. And if we make the decision tonight to not provide the additional appropriations to fund an economic development director, they're going to read that. They're going to, they're going to pick right up on that and they're not even going to touch us with a 10-foot pole. So it's about, the position we take today is going to determine how we end up long-term.
I think like with Dale and Jim, and I'm just, I think I'm trying to interpret what they're saying here, is that with the 60,000 that you already have, would that not be enough for the balance of this year? If you hired somebody on the 1st of August? I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah. But what am I going to say to that individual? Well, we've got enough money to get through the year, but I don't know how we're going to end up next year. If you were taking that there.
No, I would agree, I agree with what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying?
Well, elected officials.
It's not about, it's not about whether, if we have 500,000 in our general fund, yes, we could take that money and we could go out and we could possibly hire an economic development director. There's no question we could fund it. Now, the question really is, can we get a qualified economic development director? Why spend the money on a non-qualified if we don't get a good one? If we don't get somebody that can move the process forward here in this community? And that's my whole point, is we've got to, we've got to set the tone here tonight that's going to determine, that the tone that we set here tonight will determine the outcome down the road. And it's not going to be that long because if we even went to try to get a qualified director, they're not, they're not going to come here.
Do you have any potential candidates or leads in anybody at this point?
Well, I had a conversation today with a site consultant who's working with the company that is considering Connersville. And he told me that once we decided if we were going to pursue an economic development director, that he had a couple of people in mind that he would like to suggest. Not only that, but he said, "If you'll let me know who you're considering, I'll tell you who's good and who isn't." And he's from Indianapolis, so he knows the community, he knows the area. And so we, yes, I'm sure that we have not only some local people who have expressed interest in the position that we'll give consideration to, but we also will look outside the community.
Gary, you have another?
Yeah, I think Bill would be correct because if you wanted a professional economic development director, you're talking 100 grand or so. I mean, that's a professional salary. Nobody's going to take that part-time. And I agree with that. And Mike, you're exactly right. Basis here is going to change in two or three years. And basically what that means is you can't offer that 100,000 potential employee, guaranteed employment. It depends on this council every year and things happening on the city side. And I think what you just heard is the county can't afford a full-time economic development
But, Mr. Breitball, we have, we have had a full-time director before, haven't we?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. And there was one onboard when I was on the Executive Committee. And I'm glad that Bill brought up the fact that these folks turn over three to five years or so. And I'm glad you said that because that reiterates what Pete Bell had told to me, that these people that you hire as executive directors are expected, in his words, to leave after two or three years or maybe five. So you're hiring what is known as a temporary employee who wants long-term promises but is likely to leave in three or five years. And that's what we saw. Yeah, we lost Conia. What did we get?
Crooked, tripping.
We got Charles Dibble, Doug Howard, Brian Coats, Pete Bell, and Bill Long.
Yeah, well, now, you're, I'm talking about a higher, a higher director like Coats, like Conia.
You asked the question, what did we get, Mike?
Right, but you know what I mean. I'm talking about the director that's being asked for before this council. I mean, that's what's being asked for.
Well, we got.
It's money of partial funds.
Charles Dibble, Doug Howard, Brian Coats.
Yeah. And what have we gotten? I've been there, Shirley, I know.
Okay.
I'm telling you right now, we can't afford it.
In your opinion.
In my opinion. You're right, in my opinion.
In your opinion. Rick?
I've just got one other thing to say about this. And we're talking about giving somebody we don't even know the contract for three to five years. And we won't even appoint our people for a year at a time. People are, only people in this community. Your appointments last a year. And then you're out the door if someone has.
What appointment?
Highway supervisor, cemetery, cemetery, animal shelter. Bill Gray's job, those are all one-year appointments. So you put them on a one-year basis, every year you put them back in again, or not.
Or not.
We offer huge amounts of research.
Okay.
They're 10 years' worth.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a few comments. I delivered to Debbie and each of the council people last Friday a partial report because it's much too large of a task to complete it all in the time that I devoted to it. I appreciate the opportunity that Jim gave me when he decided not to pursue the appointment from the council as the economic development group. And I had the opportunity to be council's representative on the economic development group. And I consider that a great honor and a great responsibility. And so, please excuse me, I listened to you, so I have a few things to say. In that report, I summarized recent activity, beginning back in 2005 to current, but there's also some old activity, too. But the industrial development corp- But, the industrial development corporation was started in 1987 through efforts of concerned citizens related to the fact that many years economic forces washed away Fayette County's base of jobs, until our unemployment figures were among the highest in the state of Indiana. That was the same year that H.H. Robertson announced that they were moving their engineering, sales, and accounting departments to Pittsburgh. That was two years after they'd already moved their manufacturing facilities to Arkansas. And at that same time, when H.H. Robertson was moving to Arkansas, they were just a half an hour from the Stanton Manufacturing Facility in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And Fayette County, Connersville paid employees were setting up business in Arkansas, in another state, because Governor Clinton did an excellent job in recruiting business to Arkansas, offering training and other incentives to take them from Indiana down to Arkansas. I can personally speak from that, because at one time in 1968, I went to work for Stanton Manufacturing. I had two children and went back to work in 1974 for H.H. Robertson. You know, I like, I hate to think that I was a jinx, but certainly, we lost a lot of jobs from the time that when I went to work there. That's the reason that I decided to get involved, because we had to stop the hemorrhaging of the jobs from this community. And that's what caused a group of concerned citizens to come together in 1987. And they agreed to fund, city and county came up with a joint agreement to fund economic development. You hear a lot about UNOGO. I'm not talking about UNOGO. I'm talking about city government and county government coming together for the betterment of the community. It's not just about our grandchildren and our children having jobs, but it's about us having jobs. And like, you know, I've heard from other people, how far does it, do they have to drive for a job today, and how much does it cost? Anyhow, you know, jobs just don't, like Bill said, fly into Connersville. People, I had a response from Bill Conahay, and he said, "Connersville's had a very negative reputation with labor relations for years and years and years." And we all know about that. I think it's a lot better, but you know why? Because all the union jobs are gone. There are other jobs besides union jobs. And I, excuse me, that was inaccurate. Not all the union jobs are gone. We have union jobs at GE, we have union jobs at Stanton, we have union jobs in the highway department and the city street department. So, while I think that they have, and it has improved, certainly, all the labor relation problems aren't gone. But, bottom line, we initially were funding $50,000 from the county and $50,000 from the city. That goes way back when. Didn't hire anyone until 1990. So, they went for three years trying to decide, you know, what are we going to do? They hired Matt Boyd, who stayed until '93, so three years. After Matt Boyd, they hired Scott Beddington, who worked from '93 to '96. Melissa Matney, thank you, Melissa, for joining us, for '96 to 2004. Bill Conahay from 2004 until I don't know how, when he departed. But he was kind enough to send information on to me. The second thing, the thing that they had to overcome, was the battle between the city and the county. Who's going to do what, or, you know, who gets more of the pie, whatever. So, that was it. And the permanence of funding, you know, would there be a job next year? How in the world would any of us give up our full-time positions today with benefits to take the job of representing Connersville in this very competitive economic development world we live in? So, it's just a question. It's so easy for us to appropriate and spend $566,000 a year, annual, and I'm sure that's going up all the time, other than the budget cuts in the last couple of years, for the sheriff's budget. Why can't we spend $110,000 a year on something that isn't an expense but an investment? I consider every dollar that we have contributed in these last years as an investment, not an expense. And it's an investment in all of our futures. If we were smart and played like a business, we would be increasing their budget so they could be sending advertising to every business and factory in this country that's looking for an environment where taxes can go down instead of up, where they can be in a state with a balanced budget, where they can be in a right-to-work state, a state that balances their budget every year and has a surplus, a state that has and believes in an economic development corporation for the state, that believes in helping their regions, their counties, their cities, whatever group it takes. Like Mark Plum, he says it's okay to fund the regional group, because Purdue sent a knowledgeable person for the rural urban. Ed, maybe you heard Dr. Michael Wilcox speak, to the point that if we want to be eligible for Economic Development Administration federal funds, then it's a whole lot easier if you're part of this group. But you can't just say, "Okay, I'm going to join the six-county group, or five-county, or whatever." Who's going to represent Connersville? Mark, you told me personally, let Connersville sell itself. I'm sorry, I gave you a report that listed, I think, 60, well, maybe 50, 50 contacts, projects, that Pete Bell, and Brenda Todd, and Diana Wright, and Mayor Urban, all pitched in to work on, because we didn't have a full-time economic development director. Maybe that was the wrong choice when Brian Coats left. Maybe they've made the wrong choice. But, you know, we don't take away that group just because maybe they didn't decide right then and there to hire a new director. You know, that came on the heels of Carvin Motors' announcement. We thought, we believed, you know, maybe we were fooled. But I think that we have learned and come a long way, but we certainly cleaned up an environmental mess. We have invested in that building, which is a tremendous asset, not just to our community, to our state, to the country. It's like, I think Pete Bell and Mayor Urban said, "Everyone in this competitive business is offering shovel-free land. It's a dime a dozen, you know, a dollar an acre." Not everyone can offer that building up there. And it has been just recently appraised at over $4 million. The city of Connersville paid a dollar for it. Everyone says, "Get rid of it. It's a milestone around your neck. It's an asset for our community." I digress, sorry. Carvin Motors put us on the map, and we shouldn't waste this opportunity. We should grab every single company that makes a call. And I don't believe, I'm sorry, the newspaper and the radio station intended to give the impression that we were no longer going to answer the phone, unless, of course, we don't fund this position for a full-time director. You know, it's not like this is an expense to pick up the trash or, you know, throw out the garbage. It's an investment, and we continue to invest in the infrastructure. Because of lack of time, I asked Melissa, "Do you remember what you did during your, what are the highlights of yours?" People told me, "What have you done for me lately?" So, I attempted to list that, and, you know, I'll share this information with others. They picked up the phone and they talked to these people. The state of Indiana sent us leads, Duke Energy sent us leads, we gathered our own leads. Mark, you wanted me to convey to the economic development group that we should be sending literature out for all these gun manufacturers and ammunition manufacturers that the whole country was against. Maybe we could convince some of them to come here. Who's going to do that? I think we ought to give them money so that they can be sending advertisements to every one of those companies that are looking for somebody that can provide a better environment. Community development has been under the economic development group umbrella since 2007. In that report I gave you, I shoved over $9 million worth of grants that have come from community development. Now, Debbie reminds me, she tries to keep me honest...
What are you looking at me for?
(laughing) You were looking at me earlier. Anyhow, $9,261,000 in grant money since 2005, of which in 2007, economic development incentives were awarded $595,000 for training. Training for Stanton, training for Dresser, training for Indolex, which, if you don't recognize that name, they're now known as Sapa. I knew them by custom extrusions years ago. Crown, $25,000. You know, there's three of those companies still here, and we lost the fourth one. Like Barbara said, we win some and we lose some, but we can't stop playing the game. No one called me to discuss what I've given them as a summary of what the economic development group has been doing since 2005. But, they have helped ACHIVA resources, they've helped the Fayette Senior Center, the city police, the farmer's market, CPD, let me go on, mural project, Historic Connersville, Sheriff's Department, EMS. There was a new ambulance, a new fire truck, there were some new, many things. We got grants for separating storm and sewer. Who do you think is going to pursue those grants? Who is going to be the contact person? Who's going to provide the match? Yes?
On the grant stuff, we give money for the grant writer, and to me, that doesn't have anything to do with EDG, what we're talking about. Sorry.
I've had much discussion with the grant writer, and again, since 2007, that has come under the umbrella of the economic development group. They work closely together. I call it cooperative teamwork. I agree, and Debbie, like I say, has reminded me, they can operate on their own, but somebody has to come up with those matches. Many times, it's economic development group that comes up with a match. Many times, it's the county, the city, and there have been other gifts along the way. Someone has to coordinate with the Energize ECI, the Urban Enterprise Association, the EIDD, the WREC, the IEDA, the USDA, the SBC, the IRP, the EB5 folks revolving loan funds, Main Street facade grant programs, the TIF administrator. Who is going to do that if economic development doesn't do it? We have put our trust in them over the years, and I think they've delivered. Future community projects, while they're trying to get the regional group going again and setting up a framework that this can work with the state and the federal, so that we can prioritize the projects. You know, each of us, in our appointed jobs, have priorities. One of Barton's priorities is the new highway to garage, one of Jean Worley's is the airport terminal building. One of, that I've talked with Mark, the brownfield cleanup of the Posey Township landfill. You know, that economic development group has helped us get grants for brownfield cleanups in addition to what the community director has done. Spec building for EDGs, water and sewer utilities for Glenwood, for Orange. Where will those funds come from if we don't go out and look for those? And again, who is going to be the point person on all of that?
Shirley, we've gave that money for the grant writer. She went out and done her job without EDG director. It's two different deals. Can we move on to our vote?
Yes.
I mean, everybody's talked, and I think everybody's ready to go. It's corridor nine, I think everything's been said, the people have said.
I think it's been moved and seconded...
Right.
...that we deny the request for $50,000, and actually, I think it's $35,000, because we did approve the negative 15.
Then we'll get the $15,000, stay in.
Bottom line, it's been moved and seconded that we deny the $50,000 request. Is there any more discussion? Could we have a roll call, though?
Debbie? Dale Strong?
No.
Let me, for a minute, let me understand, we're voting on whether to deny it, so you're voting not to deny it?
The motion was to deny the appropriation request. And, one second, Debbie, I'd like to tell everyone here in the room, I didn't come in here today with my mind already made up for what I was going to do. I've listened to both sides of this argument, and both sides have made some very, very compelling arguments, both pro and con on this issue. Bill, I want to see EDG get a director as soon as possible and get things on track over there. I want to give EDG what they need, but I don't want to see EDG bank money while the county is hemorrhaging, if that makes any sense to you. And I'm not saying that to be insulting, but there has to be some accountability built into your organization. I think there's a way to do that in the future. So, in this instance, I'm going to support your organization to move forward, because after hearing all the arguments, I know that I'm not personally capable of going out and handling all, catching all these calls and everything that come in. We've got to have somebody do it for us. That's what I want to see happen. I'll stop there, and I'll vote no on the motion.
Mr. Winter?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Seidel?
Yes.
Mr. Plum?
Yes.
Mr. Navi?
Yes.
That's fully chairs, it stands.
That is 42. For the record, I would also like to vote against...
Well, you can't vote.
I can vote.
Huh? You can't vote.
42. The request for the additional appropriation in the amount of $50,000 has been declined.
Bill, like I said, approve it. We'll be there.
Mr. Wolf? You'll need to make that comment to your next chairman.
Next item, juvenile probation circuit court.
As a matter of fact, I address first, I had two requests in tonight. One is for appropriation for care of juveniles, the other is to...
I think I have the care of juveniles listed first.
Okay. I request you tonight additional appropriation of $10,000 from the juvenile probation fund. So, it'll be coming out of our funds to cover for care of juveniles. We just recently had a contract for 300, or 500 detention days for the care of juveniles. That leaves $155 in the original budget that I submitted on that line item. In addition to that, we may have extra costs. The care of juveniles that I'm asking for to cover would be like electronic monitoring fees or a non-contracted detention. An example, just last week, we had a child in a residential placement south, almost to the Kentucky border. There was a need to detain that juvenile. I need a fund in order to, I need a line item in order to be able to pay for those fees. I did look at, last year, we spent $2,449 for electronic monitoring fees, and I'm just asking for $10,000. And I'm just asking for $10,000, we have that money. I didn't write the balance, but the balance in that juvenile probation fund at the end of March 31st was $29,079. I deducted what was already approved for the other line items in that budget, and we'll have like $11,000 left over. I don't expect to use $10,000, but I'm wanting to take out with that.
I might, I might say that that original contract is in County General's budget. She is wanting to pay for this out of the juvenile probation fund, which is through user fees. And this will spare her having to come to County General and request an additional appropriation. And she tightened up that last time, and the judge was able to get some cost savings through, able to use unused days to carry forward into the next year. She did that last year and then this year, but there's additional needs, and this can spare County General.
Do you want to talk to the next one as well?
Sure. The next request that I made, I'd actually, had been approved last year. Apparently, several years ago, there was a fund created where the fees collected from substance testing fees were deposited into this fund, but, and it just sat there, it's been sitting there for over three years. At this point, I don't see the point in having that fund. So the goal is to be able to make claims to that fund until it's at zero and to close that fund. I budget our costs for our lab fees into our probation budget now anyway. There is no need for this other fund. So there's $1,283 left in that fund still. And so I'm asking appropriation for that to decline for further drug testing, and then I'll be filing the claims with what I've already budgeted in the probation budget for 2013.
So once you deplete that fund, you intend to just-
Quite honestly, I don't know why we had it.
Line it out.
There really was no need. I think it was kind of a rainy day fund in case drug testing fees got too much that it wasn't covered in the budget, but really, I budgeted for that, we don't, we don't need it.
Okay. I'll move to approve both these additional requests for the probation department.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your patience.
It's been a very educational evening.
Okay, that moves us on down to patronal concerns.
First off, I would like to apologize for getting hot earlier. I can't help it. I did this job for 10 years. It's a passion with me. I also know that you can't do, with what you all are trying to do and the commissioners are trying to do right now, you all refuse to give me a part-time helper. Dale, I'm looking straight at you.
Yeah, okay.
And $6,000, that's what caused this whole situation. Okay? I wouldn't work for this county again for a million dollars after what's been done. But you can't do these cemeteries like you're trying to do them with these volunteers, they're great. We've tried to get volunteers for years, I can't understand where they've been. You can't do it that way. The only way you can do it, you've farmed out, what was it, 20 cemeteries at 21,000?
Yes.
Something like that, 21,000 and change wherever it was. Man, you're sitting right back there and me.
Commissioner did. Commissioner did.
Yeah.
The commissioner.
20 cemeteries in two days. That's what we handle. That's for a total of $21,270 a year. For me, $5,200, was it?
Fifty-eight, seventy-seven, twenty-eight.
All right, that's what he made. And we took care of 107 cemeteries in one way or another. That's either with doing all the research on them, we've got a cemetery board that did all the research with us and everything else, and helped us with everything. You can't do it this way. You took on the responsibility, this county did, of taking all these cemeteries, putting it together, and this was years before I came into this, putting that all together and making one department. It's your responsibility and the commissioner's responsibility to take care of every one of these cemeteries, not 20 of them, not 25, all 107. And that's about all I've got to say.
I got a question for you. What, when you were talking about that truck, it was so much talk, what happened to that truck? There's comments that-
To which truck?
The blue-
That blue truck is sitting right over here in the annex.
Who's, who's using it now?
I have no idea.
I see Bill Gray driving it.
Bill Gray is using the newer truck.
So he just, he basically just took it from the cemetery board and used it?
No, he didn't, that was the commissioners assigned that truck to him because we didn't have anybody that worked for the cemetery after Randy quit.
Could it be assigned back to the cemetery, to the volunteers?
I, I could, I, you would have messy insurance happening. I, I would not feel comfortable having anybody for you-
Every piece of that equipment-
Okay.
Drive that, drive the truck.
That's fine.
Every piece of that equipment was bought with cemetery tax dollars. We were a separate entity of our own. That has to be used either for the cemetery department, or these volunteers, or however you all are going to do it now.
Right.
Or it has to be sold instead, instead of everybody sending all this equipment. Was sold, it wasn't sold. But it has to be sold, that money turned back to the state.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Gentlemen?
I'll move to adjourn in a second.
Here, wait a minute. I want to make sure, wait a minute.
Hold up.
Oh, did we, did you go ahead and approve Cindy's transfer from the extension at the time we did it?
Yes.
Okay, good, I want to make sure we got that through. So sorry.
Debbie, you brought that up. Jay was here earlier, and I thought he was, well, he was going to have some, but it wasn't in our list.
No, his additionals were all transfers within, like a 100, a 100, a 200. He can require your approval.
Okay, okay, good. All right. Anything else, Debbie?
Hi.
Okay. Dale, back to you.
I'll move to adjourn in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take care.